Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call the fifteenth twenty twenty meeting of the Santa Cruz City Planning Commission to order. Sorry for the delay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Conway?
Here.
Commissioner Spellman? Commissioner Spellman?
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dawson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Greenberg?
Here.
Maxwell? Chair Shifrin?
Um, you need to unmute yourself, Sean. I'm here. You're unmuted for a second. Okay, there's nobody absent with, are there any statements of disqualification? Being none, we'll go to oral communications. This is a time for, excuse me, anyone to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda but is validly before the planning commission. Do we have anybody who wants to speak during oral communications?
There are attendees in the queue. Any attendee who wishes to speak at oral communications, can you please press star nine so that I know you wish to address the commission?
And then do they have to push star six to speak?
They'll be queued by Zoom if not everybody has that issue, most people don't. And I don't see anybody raising their hand to address the commission at oral communications?
Okay, I'm gonna move on unless there's somebody who does want to still be heard. Seeing no one, let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes. Does anyone on the commission want to make a comment about the minutes? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who's listening in who would like to comment on the minutes from October first? Seeing none, would somebody like to make, or hearing none, somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm moving to the...
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Commissioner Spellman, will you second it?
Sure, I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Greenberg, second by Commissioner Spellman to approve the minutes. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Conway?
Hi.
Spellman?
Hi.
Dawson?
Hi.
Nielsen?
Hi.
Greenberg?
Hi.
Maxwell?
Can't hear you. Did you call in, Sean?
Hold on.
He did nod his head in the affirmative.
I wanna make sure that he can speak so that if he does wanna say something later on, he's able to do so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Okay. Must be my earbuds then.
Did you wanna register your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair Shifrin?
Aye. Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously. We now move on to public hearings. The first is the Santa Cruz Wharf Master Plan and Environmental Nation. And the way the process will follow is that we'll hear a staff report, or reports. We'll then have an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions, not make comments or statements hopefully, and then we'll open it up to the public for people to testify and then bring it back to the commission for consideration and action. Unless somebody would object to that approach, that's how we're gonna do it. So can we start with a staff report?
Dave, you're muted. Can you hear...
There we go.
Yeah, I got you. All right, here we go. And also, your notes pages are showing. I'm not sure if that's your intent. Do you have two screens there? Yeah, I was supposed to go to the other screen, but there's no notes there. So let me put it on the full screen so it's easier to see. Sorry about that. Try this again. Better?
No. Yes.
Yes, no. Okay. All right. Thank you for having me this evening. My name's David McCormick. I'm the Asset and Development Manager with Economic Development for the city of Santa Cruz. I oversee pretty much city-owned properties that are used in partnership with private enterprise, nonprofits, and otherwise put to community use. So the Santa Cruz Wharf Master Plan began a bit before my time in 2013 when the city acquired or secured a grant from the Economic Development Administration to figure out a comprehensive plan for the wharf. That was, that grant was originally for rehabilitation work after the 2011 tsunami, but the Economic Development Administration informed the city that they needed a master plan for any further funding, and so that's what they chose to fund to move forward. Tonight, I wanna just kinda give a little bit of a recap of the historic commission meeting last night and the topics that they engaged, and then dive into, you know, why we have a master plan or why we've been developing one, what the goals are, why it's needed, then into the details of the master plan as well as the EIR and master plan design standards and our policies and design guidelines. It should be policies and design standards, actually. So as I mentioned, last night, we brought the Wharf Master Plan and EIR to the Historic Preservation Commission. They were asked to evaluate the plan on its merits as regards historic resources of the wharf, as well as some input on the design standards, so that we can ensure that the goal of the master plan in bringing back more of the historical character of the wharf is in line with the cultural and historic sensitivities that the Historic Preservation Commission is charged with. So under CEQA, an impact to a historic resource is considered a physical demolition, destruction, relocation, or alteration of a resource such that it would no longer be eligible for listing on the California Register of Historic Resources. So currently, the wharf is eligible under certain criteria on the California Register, as well as on our, it's listed on our local historic building survey and may also be eligible under the National Register of Historic Places. The California Register has identified seven aspects of integrity. This is what the Historic Preservation Commission was evaluating, and it's just a little bit of good background as we get into what the plan is and why it's important to protect this community resource. So those aspects are location, the setting that it's in, and that it shapes, its design integrity, the materials it's made from, workmanship, the overall feeling of the place that relates to its history, and its association with its historic past. The, what the commission, well, what the EIR and the historical reports that went into it found is that, under the California Register, the wharf, its character-defining features relate to its location, its setting, the location being that it has never moved, it's always been in that location, the setting and its relationship to the beach, the end of Pacific Avenue, Monterey Bay, some of which has changed, but overall, the wharf's relationship has been consistent. Also important is that signature L shape where it bends the end, kind of into the oncoming waves. It's wooden materials. The wharf is one of the longest wooden wharfs in the world, certainly the longest on the Pacific coast, and likely the longest on any coast of the United States as far as wooden wharfs go. It's near its original length. It lost about forty-five feet in the middle of the century, in the 1960s, when the original warehouse building was taken down, largely due to deterioration and neglect. But most importantly, out of all of this, is that its historic value was derived from its continued function as a wharf. And so that's really what we're talking about tonight, is how the master plan will help us ensure the wharf continues to be a wharf and continues to stand for generations to come. And facing significant challenges in that regard, the master plan provides us opportunities to help ensure that it'll be sustainably run. As I mentioned, just an overview of the original wharf at top, that's what it looked like after it was built, and that's what it looks like today. As you can see, there's been a number of expansions on the wharf, at least four or five, depending upon how you, you know, how discreet those individual expansions are, but a number of times, we'll revisit that later. Also important for the historical review that they conducted was understanding that the period of significance for the wharf. The master plan relates it to its original role as related to the bay, the maritime and the commercial fishing that really transformed the Santa Cruz economy and helped in its early economic development, making Santa Cruz what it is today. And so from a historical perspective, it's that period that is really the target of sort of capturing its history, although having been there over a hundred years, it's got a lot of history to tap into, and it will continue to build history as we go forward, and we're all part of that. From its beginning, it's also important to note that it was first overwhelmingly supported by the community of Santa Cruz. In 1913, when the bonds were voted on, over ninety-five percent of the community supported it. And it was originally envisioned as a commercial wharf, there to support commerce and economic development. Today, it's more of a recreational and tourist destination, but still has a very important commercial aspect, and we rely on those partnerships with local businesses to help keep the wharf standing and funding for the operations on the wharf. And lastly, it's important to note that within the wharf historical analysis, those character-defining features relate specifically to the wharf structure itself. The building, the contemporary elements above the wharf, the buildings, the decking, the roads, lighting and utilities, all of that is, doesn't relate to its historical period of significance. It's been created well after, and so they don't have, they're non-contributing elements to its history. Doesn't mean they're not cherished or loved as they are, but they have a different standing under the CEQA and the Historic Preservation kind of rules. Given all of that, the Historic Preservation Commission approved a number of motions last night, really to, one, support the master plan and help it move forward with the staff recommendations that are in your staff report tonight, together with a few alterations that they felt would really help improve the, our efforts to bring back that historical character and the feeling of the wharf as it relates to it. So first and foremost, they recommended that historic alteration permits heard by the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, be required for certain projects. They also looked at having new buildings reviewed by a historical architect to see that they aligned with the Secretariat of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historical Features. They also wanted to really emphasize that with the proposed cultural buildings, the landmark building, the gateway, the pavilion, and really anywhere else that the opportunity presents itself, we should be looking to really convey that wharf history and ideally find a home for a wharf museum that relates to that history and speaks to it. And lastly, they suggested reducing the overall height of those landmark buildings to thirty-five feet from staff's recommendation of forty. That forty foot is consistent with the current zoning, which was established through its own public process in the general plan. So they felt that going a little bit below that is warranted in this case, as I imagine we might hear some comments tonight. A little more detail on that, so specifically as it relates to the historic alteration permit, they wanted that the new cultural buildings, those three I just mentioned, as well as the entrance gate and any modifications to the wharf structure, should require an alteration permit. I think there's, there's also, it appears that they may have also intended that to relate to any buildings over three thousand feet, which is in the second item, but, you know, pending approval of the minutes at their next meeting, I think we'll clarify that. But what they did also state is that any building over three thousand feet should be reviewed by a historic architect for consistency with those rehabilitation standards I mentioned. And again, the mention of the Wharf History Museum and then that reduction of the landmark building heights from forty to thirty-five feet. So that sums up the Historic Preservation Commission action on this item, and now we can kinda get into the planning commission topics here. So first and foremost is why are we pursuing a master plan? What's wrong with the wharf, and why do we need to do this? The first thing is that the 1998 Beach South of Wharf Comprehensive Plan, which outlined all development in the wharf and beach area, called for objective standards for the wharf. We needed clear guidelines of what new development should look like and how we can reinforce its character, and we just don't have that. The Coastal Commission likewise wanted updated regulatory and permitting framework. Sadly, the last plan we had for the wharf was found in the 1980 Beach Area Plan, so it's over, and the design framework. It's over forty years old now, and when I show it to you in just a minute, you'll see how drastically different that plan is than the wharf we have today, even though it did lead to some really, really great improvements like the Commons area, the Agora, the buildings around those, like where Alita's and Rainey's are now, or Bonnie Gifts and Surf Life. All those improvements came from that plan, but the vast majority of it in that plan was never, never developed because, you know, subsequent community process changed the master plan. That's part of the process, and certainly what we expect would probably happen with this one as well, supposing it gets approved. The next item is the Wharf Master Plan acknowledges that the wharf has a number of roles to play. It's a feature of historical significance, it's a community, a recreation community resource, it preserves habitat and open space values, and it's a real estate asset that really sustains or works to sustain itself through the revenues it generates, as well as attracting visitors to the wharf and beach area. And finally, once again, the Wharf Master Plan is a framework and guidance for what new development should look like, but it doesn't prescribe what that development will be. It just creates opportunities for us to explore and develop as we go forward. And one more item is really, the critical piece here is that it's needed for any grant funding. So we know the wharf has a lot of needs, and for years, we have not been able to compete with other agent cities and agencies because generally, state and federal programs need approved environmental documents and master plans for competitive grant seeking, and we just don't have that. So here is that 1980 Beach Area Plan. This is what it called for the wharf to look like. As you can see, it's almost kinda like the Pacific Garden Mall meets the wharf. There's a lot of geometric shapes that kind of played out on the surroundings of it. There's kind of a strange T-shaped extension at the end of the wharf that was in that plan, and while, you know, we have no intention of pursuing anything under this plan at this point, we'd really like to move forward with the plan we're talking about tonight, this is the framework we have to work from. It's forty years old, and it doesn't fit the needs or the wants of the community today, and it's not really sensitive to the historic nature of the wharf. So getting into more about the master plan, our ultimate goal is really about creating a more sustainable wharf. That means balancing our social responsibility to the history and the culture and public access around the wharf. It means creating economic opportunities for businesses and our community, but also ensuring that the wharf is financially sustainable, that it's able to generate enough revenues to pay for itself so that it doesn't continue to draw down on the general fund, particularly in a time of crisis that we face today. And then, of course, the wharf in many ways functions as an artificial reef. We know there are dozens and probably many, many more different types of species that live and call the wharf home, whether throughout the year or at different times. We know the marine mammals, like sea otters and sea lions and dolphins and things that will swim near the wharf. We know there are a number of bird species, mollusks, groundfish, I mean, the list goes on. And we have an obligation to ensure that what we're doing on the wharf is sensitive to them and helps sustain it for their habitat going forward. As part of that, we've been in a collaboration with the UCFT over the years, with the Green Wharf Program, which is, I believe, spearheaded on the city side largely by Tiffany Wise West, the city's climate program manager, but we've been able to explore pilot solar projects, wind projects, and other green and sustainability projects on the wharf through that. The next goal is really about creating a wharf that'll be more resilient. We know the climate is changing. We know that the Pacific storms are getting stronger and the waves are transferring more energy into the wharf structure, even as it ages. So we need to be very mindful of what we do to the wharf and that it will be creating a more resilient, defensible space that is stronger and able to withstand these forces. Similarly, the coronavirus has highlighted some real sensitivities economically for the wharf. Three of our businesses today are closed indefinitely, although they all hope to reopen. Jilda's under new management, but they are still waiting for the sort of economic circumstances and the virus to get under control to a point where it's financially, you know, feasible. So we have to think about, as we're building forward on the wharfs, how are we ensuring that we're able to sustain our legacy businesses, these local partners that have been there for decades? We hate to see them go, and we wanna find ways to ensure that it works for the city, but also for them. And to think that it can't happen here, it already has. Back in 1941, there was a series of fires that broke out on the wharf, put out by fishermen with, you know, water hoses underneath. Today, we have a sprinkler system. But if you can imagine, you know, in the height of summer, getting a fire truck out there with all the cars, that's part of the challenges that the Wharf Master Plan is trying to address and figure out its solutions to. Likewise, the picture at the bottom left shows you what the end of the wharf looked like before the old warehouse building was taken down, or around the same time. You can see how the stringers and caps and pilings had started to fail, and that's how we lost about forty-five feet from the end of the wharf. It also led to new opportunity. When the warehouse building came down, the Wildlife Conservation Board created the fishing park at the end, which is now very popular for its sea lion viewing hole. So, you know, the property of the wharf is a state of change in the, the sort of inhospitable Pacific Ocean. The wharf adapts and grows with the needs. And to that regard, the exhibit at the top shows a little bit about all the various changes that have happened on the wharf. It's not a hundred percent, there's a few changes that have happened within some of these spaces, but this generally shows you how the wharf has grown from its original shape into the wharf we know today. With each one, it's created more economic opportunity that's gone into sustaining the wharf, as well as increasing public access to the Monterey Bay and the businesses out there. Right now, though, there's a greater need than what I mentioned earlier. You know, I talked about the regulatory framework that we need, the ability to go after outside funding, but the fact of the matter is, the wharf has, has not been able to sustain itself for a long time. And the chart I'm about to show you, at least the last six years, it's been running at a deficit, and would be even more so if it weren't for some insurance proceeds from the tsunami. The two years where it almost balances out had over nearly eight-hundred-thousand dollars in insurance proceeds that went into repairs that buoyed its financials. Looking at, it crunches the numbers going back a bit farther, but it's a little trickier. So we really, yeah, at a time where the city is facing budget shortfalls likely to last into 2028, we've gotta find opportunities to help balance the books on our public facilities like the wharf. Additionally, the wharf has an infrastructure backlog of twelve to fourteen million dollars estimated in today's dollars. These are things that haven't been addressed over the years and gradually grow weaker and more dangerous until we're able to fix them. As I mentioned, the wharf business is struggling from coronavirus, but even before that, the city had been trying to balance its books by raising rent out there since at least 2010. And in the process, the businesses have struggled against the rent increases, but also the rising cost of labor, materials, products, food costs, insurance, utilities, you name it. Everything's getting more expensive, and likewise, their prices have gotten more expensive and less accessible to many in our community, just as they try to sustain their bottom lines. So we've gotta find ways to spread that burden and to bring in outside funding. The master plan is critical to that. As I mentioned, here's a bit of a picture of what the wharf revenues and expenses have looked like over the past six years. As you can see, the balance in red has generally been below, below zero, and it's been subsidized by the general fund. This includes the three wharf operations that are billed to the wharf account in the general fund, and that's the wharf maintenance and operation, the parking out there on the wharf, and the marine rescue. All those are credited against the revenues that the wharf generates. And those two years in the middle where it almost balances out, those are those two years where we were buoyed by insurance proceeds and about a hundred thousand dollars in the grant. Likewise, the city has tried to invest in capital projects to the extent it's been able, but even the total amount there is well short of our infrastructure backlog, which has continued to grow over the years. The two largest expenditures there are that Wharf Master Plan, which, as I mentioned, the Economic Development Administration urged us to do in order to become eligible for other funding. They simply wouldn't fund a rehabilitation project in light of our tsunami disaster without a plan in place. And then the other biggest expenditure is that Wharf Beach Intersection, the roundabout, all of that that was done. Big facelift for the beach area, but not a whole lot for the structure. Diving into that infrastructure backlog a little bit, and I just, you know, some people will say that we're trying to create a crisis here, but I think it's more about opening people's eyes to the reality. If you've been out there, even just walking the wharf, you probably have been rattled by the crumbling pavements and sort of uneven walkways, and maybe you've seen some rotten various places. That stuff happens, the wharf crew does the best they can to keep up with it. They do a great job, but they can't do it alone. And so the Wharf Engineering Report that was done in 2014, as part of the master plan, really did a holistic evaluation of the wharf. It had, they went and did core samples of pilings, they investigated virtually every, every piece of that structure, and identified both things that are positive and reassuring, as well as things that, you know, will continue to grow over time until they hit a tipping point. So the backlog, as I mentioned, is a result of age, wear, and deferred maintenance, where we haven't been able to fund the type of maintenance that's required. It includes the cost to rehab existing structures, including what you see there, and it was originally estimated at eleven point six million in 2014. But you escalate it for inflation, it's likely over fourteen million today. A key piece of it is really reinforcing failing members to improve the lateral stability of the wharf, and I'll talk about that a little bit. But it's also good to keep in mind that while we understand that this is an infrastructure problem that we have to deal with, right now, it's really, it falls on us. Grants for rehab are incredibly rare. Almost every funding agency at the same federal level wants to see new construction. That's sort of the growth machine mentality that's out there. It's not necessarily what we want, but it's the reality. By bringing in new projects, we can bring in funding from the outside that will help shore up the critical infrastructure that's there today. So in the Wharf Engineering Study or Engineering Report, they did a damage assessment, looking at the status of various features, looking at the structural design where they've got, you know, reinforced stringers underneath for the heavy traffic areas and a little bit broader, and the more open, less vehicle-oriented spaces. They did visual inspections, they did core samples. Overall, they found the pilings were in good condition. Only about five percent, a little less than five percent needed to be replaced. However, it's not, the pilings only really support the structure itself. The structure is critical to holding them all together and to resisting the sheer force of the wave. of the waves. Other weaknesses identified in the Engineering Report include the deterioration of caps and stringers and deck rods, corroded hardware. It noted that towards the end of the wharf, sections of up to 50% or more of the hardware are severely corroded and would need replacement. Similarly, A-frames, where we span across failing piles to keep up the structure above, named under buildings, those are vulnerabilities that we have to address every so often, as well as bands that are under 10 feet, or sorry, over 10 feet. Just some pictures of what kind of some of that stuff looks like. Up at the top left, you can see where a cap that supports the cross braces or, I guess, stringers and such, you can see how it's failing around the bolts that hold it together. This is not uncommon. It can be quite structural or strong for a long time, but, you know, who's to say when it fails? And it's part of the wharf crew's job to stay up on these things to the extent they have resources. The A-frames, you can see them in the top right, where there's like a failing pile and it's difficult to replace because maybe there's a building on top, they've got to spread the weight from above off to the nearby piles. And that's one of the approaches that we do to keep the wharf standing without disrupting the above-deck parts of the wharf, but that can only be done for so long, and it generally leads to the buildings having a lifespan of between 40 and 60 years, much less back in the day when the buildings were less sturdy. Other vulnerabilities in the bottom left, you can see where splices to those major beams, sometimes they were made without having a piling to support them underneath. Just a weakness. On the bottom right, you can see what that should look like for the maximum strength. These are the sorts of things that fit into that infrastructure backlog, but it also gives you a little bit of an idea of what the wharf crew is up against as far as maintaining over 4,400 piles and a half-mile-long structure out in the ocean with a very limited puzzle. The big thing we're worried about, though, is that sheer force. And what the Wharf Master Plan is looking to do through its expansions is really to broaden it, broaden the wharf a little bit, and to give it more lateral stability and strength against this force. So when waves come up against the sides of the wharf or the ends of the wharf, they push on, and the pilings are not like a building on land, they shift and move. You can see it when you go out there and you see the sort of the pavement cracking along these straight lines. That's typically what's happening as the deck boards shift and move underneath. And so it happens over time. It's part of life on the wharf. You know, originally, the wharf wasn't paved, so it could flex a bit more. But as the waves get stronger and the forces get tougher and the wharf gets older, there's a need to make it more resilient through strengthening these aspects. This is just one example. As I mentioned, you can see in the pavement those lines where, kind of almost perfectly along those twelve inch cords. But with the sheer forces and then the traffic coming across, you can see how it warps in places, how over time it shifts and continues to shift in different directions. We need the resources to go out and address these issues, and the easiest way to get them and the most promising is to be able to have a plan and environmental report in hand that we can go after funding agencies for. And to those that say that the issues on the wharf, while they can be addressed and it's not a critical failure at this time, they're pervasive. On the top, you can see where the report identified cap and stringer damage, where you saw unsupported slices. Those are just supplemental weaknesses that could at any time build with the damaged piles and the A-frames and the other things that you see on the bottom. You know, and kind of in the bottom right, I guess about two-thirds down on the bottom, you can see all those purple lines. That's underneath the Miramar site. That's why we're working diligently to secure outside funding from the Economic Development Administration to rehabilitate those piles so that we can rebuild on that site. But as I mentioned, over time, that's just reality on the wharf. There's been barbed by logs and trees that washed down in the winter, the wave forces and natural, like marine boers that dig in and eat the pilings. Those things happen. It's part of life on the wharf, but we don't have the resources to keep up with it at this time. So, putting that stuff behind us and getting into what's exciting about the plan and what it brings and what raises some concerns for some people is what is the Wharf Master Plan? First and foremost, it was developed through a public process. It's before my time, so I'm just conveying the record that I have from that, but I understand it involved quite a number of community meetings, outreach, newspaper articles, advertising, and events. It was revealed at the, or a draft report was highlighted at the 100th anniversary of the wharf in 2014 and got a lot of feedback then. Secondly, it's a framework, it's not a prescription. It just basically sets opportunity sites, it calls for some vision of what they could be, but they're really there for the community to decide upon going forward. Those buildings that are there, it's proposed in the master plan, the gateway, the pavilion, the landmark building, any of those are left at a very programmatic level, which means that they're not going to go out and be built tomorrow. Like I said, the city doesn't have the funds for it, we don't have stakeholders in place for it. There's a whole, long community process that will need to come around those, but by approving the master plan, we create the opportunity for that to happen and for those discussions to evolve, as well as the fundraising to go with it. So in that regard, it sets rules and goals and guidelines, and really what we're excited about is that it increases public access by two and a half acres, giving more people a more comfortable way to be out there on the wharf, to better experience the ocean environment, and under the coastal emissions purview to really increase our access to this coastal resource. So, the public process and visioning process, it began in August of 2013. There were a series of eight stakeholder and focus group meetings, more than 1,400 mailings were sent out to nearby property owners and stakeholders, or residents, property owners and stakeholders. There was ongoing stakeholder engagement on certain aspects, and there were updates provided to City Council, Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission. After that period, a draft was prepared in April of 2014. When the draft was finished, they held a milestone meeting, which was advertised in a slightly ad in the Sentinel. A press release to over 75 media outlets was sent, again, the mailed notices. A briefing paper on the master plan was released through the Santa Cruz Neighbors Organization, a webpage was posted, and then a scale model of the Wharf Master Plan improvements was provided at the 100th anniversary celebrations of the wharf. And so there's a lot of visibility that was gained at that time and a public process that, you know, to date, the staff has been protective of. It's not that we don't feel like there's more improvements to make to the master plan, it's really about respecting the work that went into creating it in the first place and making sure that we're in a public forum before we make any changes or other suggestions to it. Going into, from that process, we entered into the environmental review process. So on October 28, 2014, the City Council accepted the master plan and engineering report, and they directed staff to prepare an environmental review slash an initial study under CEQA. And so for those who don't know, CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act, and it's intended to reveal potential negative impacts of, negative or positive impacts of any proposed project on the environment. So staff went ahead and had that prepared. DUDEC was our consultant on it, and I believe I'm joined today by Stephanie Strilo from DUDEC, who is our environmental consultant, as well as, I should have mentioned, John Vabachi, who's our wharf supervisor, and has spent more than 30 years on the wharf keeping it standing. So, with the mitigated deck deck released in March of 2016, it went out for public comment and was brought back for initial revision and then released again for public comment. When that closed, the Planning Commission recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the master plan and the mitigated neg deck, or negative declaration related to the initial study. And then in November 22, 2016, subsequent to a strong community outreach, or sorry, strong community, I hesitate to say opposition, but urging by the public that we conduct a full EIR, staff changed their recommendation on the dais with City Council to, instead of moving forward with master plan and the initial study at that time, to prepare a full EIR. A notice of preparation was issued the following May in 2017, and a scoping session was held in June. The scoping session helped set what the targets of study are for an EIR, and at that meeting and comments that were sent in around it helped frame up what we'll see in the EIR to come. An administrative draft, that's the internal review of the EIR, was prepared in October 2017 and circulated between departments. However, due to some changes in council dynamics that happened in 2018 and the retirement and myself being hired on in late 2018, it's just been a bit of a, you know, learning curve and some delays that were unintended. So, beginning in March of 2020, we issued the public, the notice of completion and the availability of the draft EIR for public comment and extended that review period for additional 14 days, basically to the, nearly the full extent recommended under the CEQA guidelines. Following the comments we received in that draft EIR, our consultant prepared comments in concert with the city, and we had issued the availability of the final EIR in September of 2020. And then yesterday, we were at the Historic Preservation Commission discussing this very topic, and today, we're here, so we'll keep going there. So, moving on to the Wharf Master Plan report, this is just a little summary of what the master plan proposes versus what was there before. These numbers are from the Wharf's presentation, so they're close to right. Commercial uses currently are down about 7,000 square feet because we took down the Miramar Building, just up there. But overall, the wharf today is about 7.5 acres, and it's, the proposed expansion would bring another two and a half acres of that. The vast majority of it is public access space. There's commercial infill and a little bit of retail use growth, but all of that is really proposed within the existing building footprints, very close to. It's not intended to take up any of the new public space that's out there. And overall, the new commercial would be between 20 and 30% growth, maybe up to a third. What's new in the Wharf Master Plan? A number of things. The first item is the gateway entrance. So this improvement is about alleviating some of the traffic congestion on Wharf on Beach Street, creating a more efficient queuing for people to come onto the wharf, and creating some self-pay options for people to get off the wharf more quickly. It would also include a gateway signage, or it could. However, that signage hasn't been fully developed and would be really subject to additional community process. In the Wharf Master Plan and EIR, there's a sign proposed with certain dimensions. That's more of a giving it, giving it some framing to study. Through that community process, there's no commitment that it has to be quite as large as proposed in the master plan. One of the items that we're really excited about is this Eastern Promenade. This is a pedestrian bicycle connection that would expand public access out to the wharf through sustainable transportation. It would extend the wharf up to about 26 feet, which would include additional fishing area and sea walls along the eastern side of the wharf, as well as the bike way, and which doubles as a emergency vehicle access. So as I said before, you can imagine trying to get a fire truck out there in the heat of summer when the place is packed, this would make that much easier in an emergency. Alongside the Eastern Promenade is a proposed small boat landing. So today, there's, I want to say there's about five davits out there that serve a variety, five davits and landings that serve a variety of functions, but which do not provide adequate accessible access to the ocean. So if you've got special needs, need a wheelchair, things like that, it's very difficult to use those, which makes it difficult for our commercial partners to be sustainable on the wharf. And we really haven't been able to support maritime operations from the wharf, be they fishing, whale watches, you know, any of those sort of uses, well, without more accessible landings. The small boat landing would consolidate the more human-powered boat travel, so we're talking about the kayak rentals, the boat rentals, the fishing boat rentals, and potentially, you know, dinghies and things from private vessels would be able to land there with more easy access to the wharf. This would consolidate those uses, which would free up more deck space for fishing and sightseeing, as well as, again, providing that universally accessible access to the water. That promenade would continue down along the eastern side and extend down to the, nearly the end of the wharf. I meant to correct that. What it says down below, the next item is the seal, well, it says seal landing. Those are really ledgers, they're lateral bracing that the seals today love, you see them out there laying on them, but they would be more significantly created in shoring up the end of the wharf. And so, the hope is that you get increased, as a designer's hope, is that you'd get increased sightseeing potential of the sea lions by having a little bit more favorable ledgers, but it's really about strengthening up the wharf so that that end can hold up to the forces we're increasingly facing. As I mentioned, there's a south landing proposed, or I alluded to. The south landing is for larger vessels. According to the master plan, the design specs for that boat were really designed for equivalent to like a Coast Guard rescue vessel, a Coast Guard cutter, no more than about 110 feet long, intended for research vessels, bay cruises like the O'Meals or the Chardonnay, whale watching, fishing charters, and potentially commercial fishing. We know that, in speaking with some of the business owners out there and others, there's a real desire to see more of the fishing, you know, more connection to the fishing industry that's recovered, and that it needs more opportunities to kind of, you know, bring the ocean-to-table experience to Santa Cruz and the visiting public. It's something our restaurants want, it's something the fishing, our fishing industry wants, and we really feel like it would bring more of the historical feel of the wharf back there if we can support that. One thing I want to clarify, and I'll clarify again later, the south landing is in no way intended to service any sort of ocean liner or traveling cruise ship industry, nothing of the sort. One, we don't think that the depths of that area are really supportive of it, can't even imagine what the regulatory hurdles are, and the city just doesn't have any interest in that. Certainly, the community doesn't, we've heard from them, and it's not something that was ever intended in the master plan, and we've tried to clarify that in staff recommendation. You know, we don't want to prohibit the sort of dinner cruises and things on a smaller scale that we currently have, but we certainly do not want, you know, voyaging vessels coming to Santa Cruz. Coming next is this stepped overlook at the end. So as I mentioned, with the new ledgers, there's a hope that we'd also supplement that with more of a terrace overlook that would create sort of amphitheater seating a little closer to the water, giving you a more intimate experience of the wharf and some different viewing angles down towards where we hope the sea lions will find, you know, an enriched, I wouldn't say new home, they're already there, but one that's a little bit more supportive to them while also strengthening the wharf. Probably the most contentious item is the landmark building that's proposed. And so this is intended to bring, or the designer's intent was to bring back a sort of a focal feature at the end of the wharf that was reminiscent of the old, original warehouse that was built at the end of the wharf. And so, well, it originally served fish, or shipping, and then eventually fishing, and it came down in the 60s, it was sort of an art deco-ish utilitarian warehouse that was very iconic at the end of the wharf, and the designer's intent was to create something of that magnitude that would stand out against other improvements on the wharf while providing a cultural hub and destination. So the thought is that that building could support potentially a museum, whether it be one for, you know, wharf history, or serving, or any number of things that Santa Cruz has to celebrate, and that would be developed through additional community outreach and discussion, and really coalition building. Or it could be something like a maker's market or an Abbott Square-type thing. It's really a flexible placeholder for us to determine over the next 20, 30 years what happens when the end of the wharf has to be redeveloped. As I mentioned, buildings have to come down every 50 or 60 years to replace pilings and things underneath them. There will be an opportunity over the life of this plan to revision what happens at the end of the wharf. This provides the environmental review and one potential aspect of what that could be without specifying that it's what it has to be. Also, the end of the wharf is, you know, shoring it up further, there'd be a little bit more of an extension on the west side, so by bit more of an extension on the west side, so by buying a more 360-degree circuit, this part of it would be at grade, just really extending it out for more foot space and sightseeing. And then it would continue, and then as you go back towards the commentary, where the stage is today, there's a proposal to have a pavilion structure. This would really create more of a 360-day-a-year event venue potentially, for community events, concerts, really whatever the community wants to do out there, but in a way that we could use it throughout the year, which would help supplement wharf revenues. You know, currently, most of the revenue of the wharf is generated during the summer when we have tourist crowds that come in. A lot of the businesses rely on that funds, those funds, to get them through the winter when it's really sustained by locals. And so, by creating opportunities for 360-day-a-year visitation, the hope is that we'll be able to, you know, sustain the businesses better and sustain the wharf in perpetuity. And then along the backside here is the supposed western walkway. So this one would actually be recessed a little bit closer to the water, intended to not block views of the restaurant, but really what it is, is it's a resilience measure. It's intended as a buffer to protect the pilings underneath the building, so that they, it could fail first. It would be designed in a way that would have flow-through paneling, so whereas much of the wharf today is a hardwood or paved structure, this one would be more permeable to allow the force of the waves to go through it, while still being very walkable, you know, and closable in inclement weather. But again, it's there to intercept the logs and things that are damaging to the building piles, as well as the coastal commission really, really wanted to see 360-degree, 360-degree travel around the wharf for maximum public access. And the last thing here is the welcome center. So down near where the boat rentals closet is today and the Marcella, there's an idea of creating a better sense of arrival as people come onto the wharf, having sort of a welcome center that creates a welcoming place for people to come in and get oriented to what their experience is and what to see out there, really to encourage them to go and explore the entire length of the wharf and see what it has to offer. The master plan anticipates that it might also be a home for community groups, like the open-water swimmers. Being proximate to the small boat landing, it would provide easy access for them to get down underneath the wharf, perhaps with changing rooms and saunas, things that would really help support that active organization that's in the wharf and beach area. But again, you know, the programming of these, any of these structures and, you know, what they will be, is subject to community engagement and everyone deciding what should come next. So a little more detail on these. At the top, you can see a section view of what an expanded, widened wharf would look like. You can see what one rendering of one of the buildings would be. It's got a little bit of an awning here with a more open layout, so you could sort of see from the street straight through the space and out. You've got the lower western walkway and a blow-up there. You can see it's below grade, and then it would have these pilings here that would be smaller and easier to replace than ones that would be under the building. So while, you know, the hope is it doesn't, you know, it doesn't break immediately, the idea is that it's there as the easiest thing to repair, because we don't want to disrupt businesses or have to take them down because of increasingly harsh storms. And then on the eastern side, we've got this eastern promenade. So you're looking at this bikeway that would be for, you know, walking and travel. Currently, it shows a very generous size. It could be, it would really be sized based on what's needed for emergency access, as well as for what the public wants. But along the left side of it, on the eastern edge of the wharf, you can see these seating areas and spaces for the fishermen and sightseers to really just get comfortable and hang out and enjoy the wharf for what it is. And on the opposite side, by the parking, we've got some seat walls there that will help ensure that we have less cars driving into the water. It's happened many times before on the wharf, and we, really, it's a good thing to try and stop that. And up top here, you can just see what one potential scheme is for the small boat landing. So it's got through a series of ramps that would be able to provide basically wheelchair access or universal access down to the water grade. It would have the appropriate lifting structures, davits for rental boats, it may have other support resources or rental facility, and there's a number of layouts that were explored in the development of the master plan. Some designs call for a kind of switchbacking under the wharf, so it doesn't build out so far from it. That would all be part of a subsequent community engagement and design process. And those resilience improvements I mentioned. So again, the emergency access using that eastern promenade, that would really help in the event of a fire, or got a bit of terrorist attack, or something else that could happen. The small boat, the small boat landing and the south landing could serve as evacuation points, should there be a failure on the wharf or an event that limits access, they would provide universal access to rescue vessels. And the western walkway, as I mentioned, would itself become a barrier to marine debris, helping ensure those wayward redwood trees don't go knocking out pylons under our buildings. The accessible landings, as I mentioned, you can see them at top, what they might look like, and some pictures at bottom showing kind of what we are, we currently have. At the very far right, you can see the public landing number two across from Sag Narrows that never really recovered from the tsunami unfortunately, and is generally dominated by sea lions, but it, between the obsolete davit at the top and the access challenges, it just hasn't been able to be used. The other landings, the kayak rentals one and the, I think that's probably the number one, still usable, but not accessible in the, you know, as we really should be trying to provide. So within the master plan, there's also three new cultural buildings. These are the ones that, that Historic Commission recommended we maximize their height at about 35 feet. The master plan originally called for 45, or rather, up to 45. And then after the EIR was repaired, staff kind of looked at the alternatives and couldn't find a compelling reason why we'd need 45. So we felt that 40 feet, which is consistent with the current zoning for the area, just seemed like a cleaner, cleaner point to put it, with the understanding that it provides flexibility, but that the city doesn't have to build up to that high. It would really be dictated at a design level once the project started to gather hold and was, you know, proposed with the community's support. Oh, and that, at the picture on the bottom left of the landmark building, you can see sort of the step terrace, how it might relate to those ledgers for the sea lions might like down there. And that landmark building, as it was proposed in the master plan, was really intended to hearken back to the original warehouse that was out there. As I mentioned, it was originally for freight shipping and passenger travel, but, you know, it came down in the 1960s despite being a very iconic feature on the wharf. To help illustrate what these scale challenges were when the master plan was developed, they had a, they had a scale model of improvements prepared, and they displayed it at the 100th anniversary of the Wharf Master, or of the Wharf. And people were able to look at it and engage with, really, what does this mean as far as, you know, if we went to the heights that were proposed. Additionally, in the master plan, there is limited new commercial proposed, namely, it's looking at filling in and building up a little bit of the spaces that are already there. So some businesses, mostly restaurants, would have the opportunity to maybe go to two floors, and which would help generate more revenues and sustain those businesses, but also provide, you know, expanded views of the bay. Other infill is kind of around opportunity sites where there's strange eaves and buildings or a little bit of space by the commons. And it also proposes certain liner uses, but I'll get into more detail a little bit later. Lastly, the, yeah, lastly, the entrance gateway. This is what the master plan kind of shows. It has a more firm structure to sort of define the entrance and a sense of arrival, but it also doubles security measure. That beam that goes across the top is really there to house roll gates and things that can be brought down, both after the wharf closes at 2:00 AM, as well as in the event of emergency, inclement weather, we can secure the wharf as needed. The signage at the top, again, while the master plan shows dimensions for the purposes of SEQA and analysis, those dimensions are very much in flux and would be subject, with the signage design itself, to a community engagement process that the city's committed to. The master plan outlines a number of policies. I know those are kind of hard to read, probably on multiple screens, but they're really intended to not only increase the resilience of the wharf, but to bring it back to its more historical character, and to celebrate it as a unique physical and cultural landmark. It provides opportunities for better wayfinding and orientation. There's just a whole breadth of different policies within the master plan. I encourage people to read them and see how they feel about it. There's also design standards in the master plan. These are intended to shape how buildings and renovations to buildings will grow, so that we've got more design intent as far as leading the wharf in a direction that seems cohesive and which is in keeping with its historical character. So again, you know, I welcome comments from the planning commission on this. You know, certainly our intent is to preserve and enhance the historic feeling of the wharf, although creating more economic opportunity and sustainability in the process. With those design standards, there's a call for more building transparency. So you kind of look back at the wharf of yesteryear, and a lot of those spaces really opened up right into the, into the public promenade and sidewalk, so people could just kind of engage with the businesses and the activity within. You know, we still see that today in Sag Narrows or at Firefish with their exhibition kitchen and their, you know, great glass walls. We want to see more of that going forward with new development and renovation. A lot of the buildings that were built back in the day have a lot of blank walls, and that's something that's one to be discouraged. So again, along those lines are these liner uses. So where today we might have a blank wall outside of Jilbas, or, you know, where Miramar was, that would have been hiding walk-in freezers and restrooms and sort of unsightly back-up house operations, the master plan's calling for pushing those back a little bit, masking them with more street frontage activity. So it might be a walk-up oyster bar, or a gift shop that you can engage with right away, but really activating every square inch of that promenade, you know, or walk, I guess that, there's the eastern promenade and the one by the businesses, I'm not sure what to call it, but really activating every, every step of the way, so that you feel excited about being on the wharf and you want to continue walking down it. You know, today, a lot of people don't walk the entire length of the wharf, and it impacts businesses and their viability, so we really want to encourage it through an exciting environment. Second floor uses like restaurants. You know, they could come in a variety of forms. It might be something like the Wharf House out on the Capitola Wharf, where it's very open, very fluid and not fully enclosed. It could be something like Sag Narrows, which has that really great, almost like a cruise ship view out over the end of a wharf. Or it could be, you know, any number of things. It's up to imagination, but it's really about creating opportunities for sustaining the businesses and more, you know, public access to the coastal resource. Signage, the guidelines, or sorry, the design standards talk about, you know, more of this sort of paraldic hanging signage, the blade signage, that you can sort of see from a distance and is more engaging as you walk down the pedestrian way. See some of that today down at Sag Narrows and at various other places. It also limits the size and scale of major signage up on the buildings. It sets, I think, a one and a half foot maximum height and a 20-foot length and some other specifics. Okay. I'm missing something, hold on. There was, I think something moved. Oh, I, okay, that's it. Let me just fix that. The EIR, through the scoping session, designated a number of topics for further investigation after the initial study. Those relate to aesthetics, aesthetic impacts, biological and resource impact, cultural resource impacts, which I mentioned earlier with the Historic Preservation Commission and their analysis, geological hydrology and water quality impacts, as well as transportation, traffic and parking, and water and energy. So diving into the EIR and what was studied additionally and the findings, I'll just give a little overview on those things before we get into public comment, or into questions by the commission. So aesthetics, under SEQA, aesthetic, there are certain thresholds that we met to qualify as a substantial impact. First and foremost, a project has to have a substantial adverse effect on the scenic vista. They have to substantially damage scenic resources, including but not limited to what you see there. And in non-urbanized areas, there's certain additional or alternative requirements, as well as in urbanized areas, as far as how it applies to existing zoning and other regulations. And then create a new source of light or glare that would affect the day or nighttime views in the area. So, aesthetic seems, it could be, you know, could seem to be somewhat of a subjective standard without, without a baseline objective threshold established, and to the extent that Santa Cruz has one, it is in the, in our local coastal plan and our general plan, where we've designated significant view shuts. So this was adopted by the, by the city with the general plan, and it's, it looks at significant panoramic views that are out there in the beach area, as well as, as well as, you know, visual landmarks and things there. So to the extent that DUDAC or Environmental Consultant was able to align with this in analysis of the aesthetic impacts on the wharf, or with the Wharf Master Plan, that's basically what they did. So as you can see where the points are of viewing that they proposed, or that are in this document, DUDAC essentially went to replicate those through their photo simulations that were taken, both from the beach area, the beach, down on the wharf, and off of the sort of bluff by Seabright Beach there, or I think it might have been off the bluff. They followed it up with a, what's called a photo simulation, so they had a local architect sort of scale out what those buildings might look like from these various vantage points. So this is looking from west cliff, you can see at top, you know, what the wharf looks like today and what it might look like if those buildings were built to their maximum heights. So landmark down the right, the event pavilion, you can see what that lowered western walkway might look like as, as a slight change from the, from the pilings you can see today. This is looking from Main Beach, what it might have looked like, what one, you know, version of an entrance gate might look like, what an expanded lifeguard station might look like, gateway building, you know, again, one model of the small boat landing. All of it is subject to design and, and further community engagement. So what you see there is only the maximum extent in the master plan, it's not necessarily what will be built. This is looking from Cowell Beach, at the same sort of layout on the left. You can see what the landmark building might look like, the gateway building, again, the standard, the life station and the entrance gates. And then lastly, looking from Over Eye Seabright, kind of what that, what that might look like. And you can kind of imagine what these, you know, particularly with landmark building harking back to days past, you know, that's one shot of what the wharf looked like probably in the 1950s. Towards the end, you can see there's some second-story buildings already there on the wharf, the historic landmark building kind of dominating the end of the wharf, but, you know, it's a different change than it is today. The next topic is the biological resource. So namely, the EIR found that there could be potential impacts from noise disturbance and disruption in nesting, bird nesting. As a result, it recommends certain mitigation measures, including developing a hydroacoustic marine and mammal monitoring plan, and so that's really looking at ambient noise levels as a result of construction and various other things, and developing plans to minimize those impacts on the animals and to avoid that. It recognizes a number of potential steps that might be included in there, but that's a mitigation measure that would be developed with any new construction. It also recommends a soft start for construction when you're doing pile driving and things. So you kind of give a warning shot with the pile driver, let it wait, let the animals disperse, and then you begin your work, supposing there's any better and then you begin your work, supposing there's any better impact in the first place. Also looks at options like cushion block, which would soften the sounds and the vibrations of the pile driver, as well as a bubble curtain that emits an underwater curtain of bubbles to mitigate noise. So there's a lot of different options. We've been working with the various state and federal agencies for the past two years on just maintenance permits for this type of work. And what's proposed to the EIR is very much aligned with what those agencies have generally required and have been, you know, seeking as we go forward on just maintenance. And then as far as the birds go, it recommends a pre-construction biological survey. So getting a biologist out there to assess where nests are within the realm of proposed construction projects. If bird nests are found, one, avoiding them, you know, as long as possible, but setting a strict buffer around those birds. And I believe in the EIR, it's generally 100 to 150 feet from a nest, depending upon species, in order to assure that the nests go undisturbed. And that's in compliance with the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. Just a little example of what that kind of looks like. This was the bird study that was done in 2017 about two different species of birds that are common on the warp. If we were to look at those nesting sites and apply a 100-foot buffer, you can see what that would do as far as, you know, restricting maintenance and construction work on the warp, which, you know, doesn't happen in a vacuum. We don't have the luxury of avoiding pile driving and maintenance work out there. And so we have to be very strategic around how this work is done to minimize impacts on birds as we go forward. Similarly, impacts to sea life. We mentioned the aesthetic impacts, creating glare and lighting and things. The warp master plan would help buffer and limit the ambient light leakage into the ocean and from structures, both through the hooding and the design of the... Moving forward, we've got the geology and hydrology and water. So there are certain CEQA thresholds for this, which is largely about avoiding, you know, loss of structures and life due to faults and earthquakes and seismic activity, as well as modifying drainage patterns in negative ways that impact rivers and streams and oceans and minimizing any potential leakage or release of pollutants into things like the ocean. And so in the EIR, they identified some potential impacts from development. All are very incidental and would not be a, necessarily, they would not necessarily occur with construction, but there's always a likelihood that you might have an equipment leak or drop materials that fall in the water or, you know, uncover some old materials that may be under the sand that, like a, you know, we didn't find any, but say there was a car that drove off that was never dug out. Maybe it's because of oil that came out. So that's sort of stuff that could happen whenever you start stirring around. We did do an underwater survey with the magnetometers and scuba diving and did not find any significant structures or historical resources. But you just never know. And so the EIR was really trying to anticipate that and divide mitigation numbers, measures. So really what it recommends is creating a floating boom around construction to contain anything that might get out, whether it's a piling or, you know, wrapping or whatever. And containing wherever vehicles and equipment are fueling, keeping a containment on that so that if there's leakage that spills out, it spills into a, you know, a pan or a plastic sheeting or something. And then mandating a work stopper in the event that we do find any unintended leaks or, you know, dispersions of materials that shouldn't be there. And providing time for the city to consult with the Department of Toxic Substances Control and find the right solution to that problem. The next issue is transportation, traffic and parking. So this was, the EIR studied what the proposed improvement would do as far as potentially increasing traffic and parking demand as a result of the warp master plan. There's the thresholds that have to be met in order to actually create a significant impact. Where the warp master plan doesn't substantially increase parking on the warp, it creates between 40 and 60 spaces by re-striping the existing footprint of parking. But they studied existing and historic traffic levels and parking levels on the warp and determined that it wouldn't rise to the level of substantial impact. It also would result in increased emergency access versus inadequate and it would encourage more sustainable transportation like biking and pedestrian uses. And then as far as CEQA land use, so will the proposed land use changes on the warp to increase to commercial or community buildings? Will those conflict with existing land use plans or divide and establish community? In the literal sense, no. I think the, you know, metaphorically, it might have a little bit of division between what people see at this point. But really, the master plan again is about creating opportunities for us to have those really meaty discussions about what we should build and why and create those opportunities for us to sustain the warp going forward. And then it also requires, CEQA also requires us to study project alternatives. So what are alternative designs and things that might have a reduced environmental impact? So the no project alternative is always required by CEQA and two additional project alternatives were proposed in studying the EIR. The first, reduce the width of the east promenade by about 12 feet, which would make it basically not usable for emergency access, but would reduce the extension of the warp on that side. And it would also recommend the reduced height to 40 feet versus 45 on the community buildings, which is what staff ended up going with our recommendation, mainly because it aligned with the existing zoning and, you know, and previous public process in that regard. And then the last item was a modified project, which would eliminate the western walkway and again, reduce the heights of the buildings to 40 feet. For more information on the warp master plan and the documents you've seen today, you can go to the link right there. It's also in the staff report. There's virtually anything that's been studied on this project, as well as the master plan itself, the engineering report, all of that. Upcoming EIR date, I meant to change that to November 2020 is the likely council date. We haven't yet determined what date that would be. It's really contingent on, you know, Planning Commission's feedback tonight. And then supposing that council does eventually approve the master plan in some form, there would be a 30-day challenge period after the CEQA is certified. All right, I'll leave it up to Planning Commission questions. Thank you for bearing with me through all that.
Okay, thank you very much for a very comprehensive presentation of the warp master plan and the EIR. We're going to start first with questions from commissioners. Maybe you could unshare your screen, David, and...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Do commissioners, what I would suggest is you raise your hand. I think if, there should be, is there something there you can click on that will show that your hand is raised or just do it on the video? But are there questions from commissioners before we throw it open to the public? Yes, Commissioner Spellman.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. One, when this came before us back in 2016, I think one of the interesting components to the proposed improvements out there was dealing with the trash and there was a whole system designed around that. And I thought there was a big tie-in between potential erosion and destruction of the surface of the warp and that system. And I guess, was that, what's happened to that? Is that still a part of this? If you could answer that and then...
Go ahead.
And my second question would be for the gentleman who is here representing the warp, who works for the city out at the warp. I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name at the beginning. I've got this one general question for him that would be, you know, as somebody who's out there every day, what is your big concern regarding the long-term viability of the warp?
I'm going to go ahead. I'll go ahead and answer the first question and then I'll leave it to John Babaci to really highlight the second. So I didn't, there's a bit of an oversight as far as the trash collection and the stormwater collection. Those are, you know, key parts of the sustainability of the warp. However, they didn't really arise in the public comment and I was running short on time, so I didn't get to put that in the presentation. The master plan does call for the potential for a pneumatic trash collection system that would centralize trash collection into a system that would ship it down towards the end of the warp and off into an off-site collection center. We've had some discussions with a vendor that's created these in other places, namely the East Coast and Europe. And they've had discussions at the boardwalk about how feasible it would be for them as well to sort of consolidate trash collection in the entire beach area. This would allow us to free up space on deck that's currently for trash impactors and, you know, an open waste bin, things like that, that are really kind of degrade the experience on the warp. Although it's a substantial capital improvement that would need to be figured out. We've also discussed with Public Works and their refuse team about how it works for them and sort of studying and learning more about it. But it's something we're really excited about. Similarly, stormwater collection would be consolidated into a central drainage and treatment channels, so that we'd have less runoff ending up in the ocean, less debris getting washed off the deck. And along those lines, staff has already implemented a number of changes to try and reduce debris and trash getting into the ocean. So John's team has been, if you've been out there recently along the railings, they've been installing mesh along the bottom lengths of them so that wind-blown trash and stuff will get caught on deck rather than ending up in the ocean. Similarly, the city's carbon or climate adaptation fund supported a pilot project that we're looking to bring forward of one of our, one or two of our existing businesses to test out a point source aerobic digester system. So it's kind of a next phase garbage digester or garbage disposal that takes organic waste and it dissolves it down using natural enzymes and processes in a very small amount of water. It basically dissolves food waste down into particles less than half a millimeter in size that can then be flushed down the drain to the wastewater treatment facility and dealt with as any other organic waste. So again, that will reduce the presence of organic material on the warp. It'll reduce potential workforce injuries and it'll make us a more sustainable operation because we don't have to truck off all that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Babaci, you want to answer the second question, please?
Could you please reiterate, what are the things that concern me the most day-to-day out on the warp? There are a few things. The first of which is that we're getting a lot of corrosion in our fasteners on the warp. A lot of corrosion that's also causing the joists to open up on top and exposing them to wood fungus. And the danger in this is that the warp continues to look really solid and the piles are in good shape, but that doesn't mean that the warp is in great shape. What the decking does is it serves as a sheer panel and it sort of contains the movement of the warp in big events, big storm events. When you lose that, you can start to get independent movement in large areas of the warp and the damage can compound really quickly and become much more expensive to fix. The other concern that I have is that we're really not accommodating the number of people that want to visit the warp in the summer. We've got this wonderful rail trail that is being built, the first section in the website, that's going to terminate actually right there at the base of the warp. Well, it won't terminate, but the first section will. And this is going to provide a lot of opportunity for bicycle traffic. And I think this is really a real saving grace for the economy of the warp, which brings another concern that sustainability in the ocean really means being able to grow and move with time. And if you can't pay for yourself, if you can't pay the bills, you don't live, whether it's biologically, economically. And so we need to grow, we need to grow to accommodate the neighborhood that's grown up around us, really. We haven't done anything substantial on the warp for almost 40 years. Meanwhile, our neighborhood has grown substantially. The east walkway or the east promenade here really goes to a lot of these issues in that it does provide room, the width of it provides additional stability for the warp. It represents a good grant opportunity because it's a public access feature and an emergency access feature. And the width will provide a lot of stability for the warp. And when we tie this new section into the old section, a lot of the decking that really needs to be repaired there will be addressed. And so that and the other thing that I've always, one of the things that has really disappointed me over my time at the warp is that we lost our charter business and we lost fishing vessels dropping fish off at the warp. And I just think that's really critical to the heritage of the warp to get those things back. That's what a warp is. Our tagline is that we're the gateway to the Monterey Bay. And to truly be that, we need to bring back those businesses.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Spellman?
That's it, thank you, appreciate that.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Dawson, you're muted, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question around the aesthetic evaluation. So the photo simulations were looking in, and I didn't see any photo simulations based on being actually on the warp, looking out and around and how the development would affect those. Did I miss that or was that not included in the analysis?
I'm not sure if that was in, if that was done. I'm going to defer to Stephanie Strel on that. She may know why or why it was done or if it was done and/or if not.
Stephanie?
Yes, good evening. The standards, the thresholds for significance for aesthetics impacts really look at whether or not a structure would block scenic views or disrupt the visual quality of the area. So we really focused on those views as opposed to views looking out. I'm not sure what features of the warp would be significant from the warp. We did respond to a comment that's in the final EIR and looked at the end of the warp. And from the end of the warp, you can't really see the beaches because of the existing development on the warp. So we did look at that component, that aspect of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dawson, a follow-up or...
No, I'll just save it for my comments, thank you.
Other commissioners have questions? Yes, Commissioner Nielsen?
So I have a question, I guess this is for David. For the western walkway, it sounds to me like what you're, in terms of how you presented that, that it's primarily a structural element or a way to stop, I guess, debris from hitting the, hitting the warped pilings. Is that, is that true? I mean, is that basically what it is? Is it meant to, to be a weight break or something like that?
It's a multipurpose improvement. It certainly is there to provide greater access around the warp and a better experience of, you know, the warp structure itself, which is one of the historic elements. But it's also there as that buffer, right? So for the long-term sustainability and resilience of the warp, having a buffer on the outside will reduce the likelihood of impacts to structures that are supporting buildings and as a consequence, businesses and people that are in those businesses. It'll reduce that vulnerability, but at the same time, it's there to increase public access around the warp and our experience of various aspects of the warp.
Is that access in any way intended to be used for emergency access also? Or is that just, is it just for pedestrian access?
I don't think it's substantial enough for like an emergency vehicle. Certainly a lifeguard or, you know, a firefighter or something might use it if they needed to, but I don't think... you know, a firefighter or something might use it if they needed to, but I don't think it would, i- it's not of such, such size that it can be used for a vehicle of any sort.
Okay. Um, and then you, you mentioned the, um, the increased parking, um, that is being generated through the plan. Uh, and, but what I also, and I also read, I di- I, I'll make, I'm just, what I read was that there is, um, there was no expansion, um, of this master plan in terms of any car use. So, um, basically what you're saying is that added parking is happening solely through parking restriping?
It's looking at, largely it's looking at, uh, one, utilizing the, the space that's freed up from, uh, going to a more sustainable garbage collection system, uh, so by removing those, those, uh, storage spaces. But it's also looking at creating more apparel, or not parallel, uh, perpendicular end-in parking versus the angled parking that's there today. It's a more efficient layout, apparently. Um, you know, I'm not a parking designer, but, um, apparently they did the math and they got more spaces.
Okay. But, but there's no, but, but the, the wharf is not, in, in essence, the wharf is not being expanded at all for parking in?
Not at all.
Right, okay. Um, I also, I have a question. Um, this might be for Planning Director. Um, this is, it's kind of more of a process question. Um, so as part of our materials that we received, um, for this meeting, we rece- we got a letter that was addressed to us from the chair. So I'm curious, in my seven years on, on planning commission, I've, I've never experienced that. So I'm just curious, is that a, is that normal? I mean, is that, is, is that just part of a normal process?
Um, thanks for asking that question, Commissioner Nielsen. Um, it is not, I would say, part of a normal process. Um, uh, Chair Schiffern had requested to do that as, uh, part of last, uh, meeting when this was continued. And, um, when this was continued as part of last meeting, um, technically there could have been discussion as part of that. Um, and so, uh, given that there could have been discussion, um, during that noticed public hearing, um, even though it was only planned for continuance, we, uh, we did allow that, uh, to move forward. Um, Chair Schiffern will attest to the, uh, to the fact that we've had discussions with our, uh, city attorney about, um, uh, the desire to present, uh, letters to the commission. And the position that we and the city attorney have taken is that, um, when, uh, those letters are, if, if a letter is presented in advance, um, that can have the effect of precluding others, um, from communicating with one another because it then becomes a series of communications in which everyone is aware of, um, one commissioner's stance on an issue. Thus, we have, uh, been reticent to allow for commissioners' comments to come out in advance of the hearings. Um, however, um, given this unique situation where there was a continuance, um, we, we did feel it was warranted at that time, given that, you know, there could have been commission discussion. But, you know, I do like to, uh, take a cautious approach to the Brown Act, um, and, um, I encourage you all to do the same. Um, and that is why at the last meeting when that, uh, letter was released and we, we mentioned that it would be released and encouraged each of you to not, uh, communicate with one, one another in order to avoid any Brown Act issues. And, um, you know, we could get into that separately at a, at a, a different, a different discussion. There are some, um, uh, intricacies to that evaluation, um, that, um, you know, Commissioner, or excuse me, Chair Schiffern and the attorney and I spent, you know, an hour talking back and forth and I spent an hour talking with the attorney about before that. So, you know, given that that's not agendized, we can't get into a detailed conversation about that. But I'd say that, um, that, you know, given those unique circumstances of it, of it being heard at the last meeting and, and when commission discussion could have actually occurred at that last meeting, given that it was a notice item, um, we, we felt it warranted to go ahead and release it at that time.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation.
You're welcome.
Uh, my questions are done. Thank you.
Well, let me respond to that if I could. Um, one of the frustrations I've always had on, when I sit, not sit on a public body, is getting information at the meeting. Uh, it's sort of, it's hard to think about, um, you know, what you want to do when you're looking at the written information and you're trying to deal with public testimony and you're trying to respond to concerns that other commissioners have or that you have. And so from my perspective, it's helpful, um, for commissioners to be able to do whatever other members of the public can do, which is make their thoughts known in advance of the meeting. As a planning director says, uh, that our city attorney, unlike, uh, other, uh, councils, um, take a very strict view and the planning director take a very strict view of, um, the Brown Act. You know, so I think it, it's, while it's unusual, um, I think I would benefit from hearing some of the concerns that, um, the other commissioners would have on staff reports, um, before the meeting so I could think about them rather than having to deal with them at the meeting and maybe continue, continue the item. So it's strange to me that commissioners are essentially, uh, less able to present their, um, perspectives in a thoughtful way than members of the public. But as the planning director said, that's not on our agenda tonight, so it's not worth pursuing. But, um, I just wanted to give a sense of what my, you know, what my concerns are. So other commissioners have questions? I have a few questions myself. I wanted to, uh, talk about the height, um, the height issue is one. My understanding from the draft EIR that the current height, or I don't know if it's average height or maximum height is twenty-seven feet. Is that correct?
Uh, that's my understanding, um, you know, probably based on the plan, uh, for those buildings. You know, things aren't always built exactly to plan, but.
And is it true that the historic warehouse building was only thirty feet high?
It was about thirty feet high, yeah, at its highest.
The proposed landmark building originally was going to be significantly higher than, um, the historic building as currently recommended by staff. It's still significantly higher than, you know, a twenty-five percent higher. And it's definitely higher than the existing, um, average height or maximum height. So is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, that's correct and there's a couple of reasons for it. Um, again, the, the designer's intent was to create, uh, a focal element that would, uh, sort of emit the, the grandeur, uh, of days past in relation to the now larger built form on the wharf. So where Dagno Rose is now a two-story building and larger, in order to stand out against it, the designer said, hey, we need a, you know, a substantially larger building. Uh, it also, the larger envelope provides the interior's height while allowing the, the needs to evolve based on what the community would want if there was a second floor perhaps that was wanted.
Okay, let me, um, clarify that what actually is happening with approval of the master plan. Um, you talked about it essentially being a framework and guidance. Uh, but it does have a legal, uh, uh, a, a legal status as well. Am I not correct? That essentially if the city would want to do a project that was substantially different from what's in the master plan, it would have to redo the environmental documents. Is that not the case?
Not necessarily the entire environmental document, but they would have to amend it or tear off of it if they were to vary from it substantially. Uh, similarly, um, where almost every improvement proposed in the master plan is only at a program level, um, the exception being the gateway structure, uh, not the signage, and the, uh, the east promenade, which are project level under the sequo, uh, EIR. Uh, any, anything else proposed in the master plan will need additional environmental review once it advances to a higher level of design.
But I'm so glad you mentioned that because it didn't come out in your presentation. Um, am I correct that for those two project level, uh, uh, those two project level analyses, there is no, uh, as long as they adhere to what's in the draft EIR and the master plan, there is no, uh, additional environmental review that they'll have to, um, be subjected to? That's the gateway building, stop and promenade?
Yeah, not the gateway building, the, the entrance gate. Um, but yeah, that's, that's not, not exactly true. Um, at the local level, there's no further sequo necessarily involved in them, just unless they change substantially from what's proposed. Um, but there's still very significant environmental review and regulatory processes for any improvements on the ocean. So we'll be working with, uh, with NOAA, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the, um, uh, was it NIMPs? The National, oh, John, you remember the abbreviation is, I always forget it.
National Marine Fisheries Service, National Marine Fisheries.
I mean, there's, there's a half dozen state and federal agencies that we still have to work through, um, all subject to potential, um, comments and, and public engagement or public feedback and appeal, uh, before we can even hope to break ground on a project. So.
That's an interesting, that raises an interesting question because one of the strengths I saw in the, uh, EIR and in the, um, the analysis was that there weren't any negative comments or critical comments from these regulatory agencies. And I, I really think the staff should be complimented for working as closely with them as you have because I know with other projects, they can be tough, uh, in terms of, um, criticizing what the city is proposing to do in, in a particular project. So I think, um, I, it's, it's a little surprising what you're saying is that I would have assumed that as part of the EIR here, uh, a lot of the concerns, if not the significant concerns of those agencies have already been taken care of. So that the city could be, uh, based on adoption of the master plan and the EIR. The city can move forward and implement these projects. Uh, I know there is, there's gonna be more sub, uh, review, uh, and, but, uh, you know, isn't it true that the mitigations that are in the EIR are considered adequate, uh, by these agencies uh, in terms of the particular projects that are project, project level?
Uh, I'd say the, the jury's still out on that. I, I'd say that they are generally consistent with what they've required in the past, um, and what they generally want. Um, as I mentioned, we've been in, in close negotiations with many of these agencies for two years now, just trying to get maintenance permits, um, while spending handily on emergency permits, uh, to drive a few piles. So, um, while we're still trying to figure out what the regulations will be for any improvements in the, the master plan, which we haven't really begun, um, what's in the mitigation here is very in line with what they require for, for the sort of maintenance work and the things that, um, are similar to that sort of improvement.
Well, and my, let me just say, in my experience, the regulatory agencies look over these documents very, very carefully. And if the secret document is saying this is a project, uh, level analysis for the gateway and for, for the entrance and for eastern promenade, if they had problems with the mitigations or the analysis, they would have said so. So don't, I, I don't think you should underestimate the success that you, that this process re- represents in terms of the willingness of the, uh, the regulatory agencies to, uh, not be, you know, be essentially supportive of the, uh, the EIR's analysis.
I, I, I certainly hope so and, uh, fingers crossed, uh, we've got a great team, uh, between DUDAC, uh, John and, and our engineers at Moffett Nickel. So hopefully, uh, hopefully you're right and we've done it all, you know, right. I, I think we've got a great team on it.
Well, I just, uh, I just want to emphasize it because, you know, the, the appro- if the council adopts the master plan, they are setting certain boundaries in terms of what can and can't be done during the future of the, at the future of the mall. If the, if the, uh, council ultimately agrees with the Star Preservation Commission and sets the height at thirty-five feet, that's as high as it's gonna be possible to go. Um, and that's, you know, so these decisions are not simply a framework or guidance. They are setting policies that, um, will need to be followed. Um, and so I just think it's, uh, important to recognize that the city is making a commitment to this plan by adopting it, adopting the EIR. My final question is really for, uh, Ms. Stre- Strillo and it's based on a letter we received from the Sierra Club, uh, regarding the, uh, biological analysis. And I wonder if you've seen that letter and could comment on their concern, which I had a hard time understanding, but it seemed to be that the, the biologist cited or the biologist's, uh, statement cited in the fir- fir- final EIR wasn't adequate because it wasn't, uh, clear who the person was and, um, what the evidence was. Could you respond to that, please?
Um, was this the letter that came in after the final EIR?
Yes.
I have not seen that. Maybe, um, Dave can email it to me right now and I can get back to you on that.
Well, I would just say that, you know, we're making a recommendation to the council. I, I would, uh, suggest that when the, uh, the plan gets to the council, maybe there'd be some kind of a written response to it since it is challenging the environmental document.
Okay. I will, I will just say quickly, there were five biologists that worked on the different, um, pieces about the draft and final EIR.
Right.
Yeah, I might ask, uh, Tess, uh, or Lee, I'm not sure if I have that exact letter, so Tess, if she might be able to, to send that over, uh, to Stephanie. Um, just trying to find the right one.
The e- the email was.
It's posted to the website as well. It's.
Oh, it's up on the website?
So it's posted to the item.
Thank you.
If there are no que- okay, Commissioner Nielsen?
I, I do, I just, um, I, I think, um, some of, um, the chair's questions, um, I have a, a follow-up to that. Um, it's just based on the height, building height. So based on, um, the thresholds of significance, um, is building height specifically included as, as one of those things? Or is it, um, or does it more have to do with the potential obstruction of scenic views?
I think I defer to Stephanie on that, but my understanding is it's, it's largely the, the scenic views and somewhat subjective.
Yes, it's mostly, um, obstruction of the scenic view, although one of the standards does look at, um, visual compatibility in an urban setting that is also tied to consistency with, um, local regulations that address scenic quality. And so we, we did discuss that a little bit in the EIR with regards to, um, height limits, but there aren't really any specific regulations that address scenic quality, um, specifically.
So, uh, so with that, I mean, um, comparing, I mean, it's, you, you can't draw, there's no correlation of really drawing, uh, uh, you know, comparison of the existing building to the proposed building height at forty-five feet?
Um, yes and no. I mean, the sequel guidelines are kind of the basis for our standards of significance and those were amended a couple of years ago. And so the question that formerly was in the guidelines that dealt with, um, is basically whether a project would substantially degrade the scenic quality of the site or surrounding area. And we would look at, um, structures in terms of their overall massing, scale, height, um, to make that kind of, um, determination. And that, that criteria has changed a little bit, um, in the sense that it says in, in urbanized areas, it's whether or not the project would conflict with applicable zoning and other regulations governing scenic quality. So in the EIR, we, we actually did so. We've looked at the overall, um, massing and scale, scale of these new buildings in relation to the surrounding areas as we would have under the former thresholds, as well as to set the, any conflict with regulations governing scenic quality.
Okay. And, um, so it's, so it's somewhat, in a way, it's, I mean, from what kind of what I'm hearing, it's kind of subjective. It is, it is subjective in terms of like, you know, what people, you know, as they look at those, a- as they look at the, um, the photo simulations of, you know, what, what would be an appropriate height, um, for those buildings is, it, it is subjective. Um, so I guess the other question I have is, uh, is there a threshold in terms of, um, and, uh, you know, what is considered being, what's considered obstructing a scenic view? Like, is there a way to, I mean, is there some sort of threshold that, that's placed in terms of how much of a view is being blocked? Especially with these panoramic, panoramic views, um, um, there's a very, you know, obviously a very wide scenic view. Um, um, there's a very, you know, obviously a very wide scenic view. Um, and so I just wonder if, is there some sort of threshold or criteria that, you know, that, you know, if it gets beyond a certain percentage that, um, that it's considered, um, to be substantial?
Uh, which, well, there's not. Again, this is somewhat of a more subjective topic of all the topics we review in the EIR. The question, the threshold, uh, is whether or not a project would have a substantial adverse effect on the scenic vista. And so with that in mind, there's nothing in the local coastal plan or any of the city's plans or regulations that further define how much obstruction of an ocean view would be, you know, more significant than others. So we tried to look at the whole of it, you know, the panoramic views that are visible from the key spots and, you know, in the context of the background mountains and the ocean views and, um, where these new buildings might be blocking something. And I think we addressed that, um, you know, clearly from the end of the wharf, there's going to be some blockage of views, but we still have most of the ocean view available in that panoramic.
Mm-hmm.
And likewise, Stephanie, I, I think that the shoreline views from the end of the wharf were already somewhat blocked by the dolphin and, you know, the, the sea lion holes and restrooms and things like that. So it's not like it's entirely pristine views looking back from the wharf. Um, you know, of course it changes, but you still have the circuit around the buildings that you could view from.
Commissioner Nielsen, is you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I'm here. No, that's good. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Uh, seeing now, let's open it up to, uh, public comments. Um, how is this going to work?
Um, okay, so, we have seven attendees on the line. Any member of the public that wishes to address the commission at this time, please press star nine. That will put you in the queue. Please do that now, so that you're all lined up. When I call the first, uh, the last four numbers of your phone number, you will be on live to speak with the commission. So, again, please press star nine to indicate that you wish to address the commission.
And let me just suggest that, um, if you're willing, give your name, and you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Okay, Chair, at this time, it appears that there's one person of the seven that have indicated that they wish to address the commission. So, um, if you would like me to start, I can allow number two, one, seven, four to address the commission.
Okay, sounds good. They have to unmute themselves. Okay.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gillian Greenside. The agenda report states that the city cannot apply for grants until the plan and EIR are approved. That is not accurate. The city secured an eight hundred and fifty thousand grant from the Federal Department of Commerce without a plan and EIR. There are numerous grants available to restore and renovate historic structures, none of which require a plan or EIR. The agenda report gives the impression that the wharf is in poor shape, in their words, approaching a slow boil. I'm very pleased that at least this evening, it is acknowledged that the engineering reports show that ninety-one percent of the pilings are in excellent or good shape. The, the concerns expressed by Mr. Bombachi are real, the corrosion in the joints and the roadway needs fixing. None of those important renovations need this master plan or an EIR. By the way, and this is confirmed by the engineering report, the wharf was not damaged by the nineteen eighty-nine earthquake because of its flexibility. To shore it up as though flexibility is a problem should be of concern, and the wharf did not suffer damage from the tsunami. The agenda report states the wharf has been losing money for the past five out of six years. To make this claim, staff includes the cost of the lifeguards and marine rescue, both of which are funded by and fall under the fire department and should not factor into a discussion of wharf finances. With the EIR, the city's response to SEQA-based public comments failed to defend the city's position that this massive project beyond construction will have no or less than significant impacts. Just two examples. Pigeon geel emotes fly each year from Puget Sound to their nesting sites under the wharf. While the city acknowledges that the lowered western walkway will likely significantly impact the birds' access from that side, the city claims the birds will still have access from the east and the south, and that because the wharf will be increased by thirty-three percent, that habitat under the wharf will be similarly increased. There is no statement nor supporting document from the biologist to support this claim. The only work the biologist did was to count the number of species and locate the nests. The EIR fails to respond to the public comment that the lower deck to the south, the new boat landings, outriggers, and associated visitors to the east will likely deter the birds from those vantage points as well, and thus is a significant impact that requires mitigation. Beyond geel, if I could just finish my, my sentence here. Beyond geel emotes, the impact of the lowered western walkway is dismissed as not significant in the EIR, which fails to follow Secretary of the Interior's standards for guiding constructions. How will sea lions and nesting birds adapt to this lower walkway with hundreds of people entering their territory? What loss to the public of the snowy egrets that perch on the west side railings? What loss to the historical character of the wharf? In conclusion, this EIR is not legally defensible. Your motion this evening should be to send it back for revision prior to city council deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that, press star nine?
I, uh, don't see that anyone, oh, there's one. Okay, so there's one, and there are more of you on the line. So please, all of you who wish to speak, please press star nine now, so that we don't have unnecessary confusion and delay. Um, there's one hand, and this is last four numbers, six, seven, six, six, which I'm allowing to speak now.
You're welcome. Please, uh, give us your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, uh, Fred Geiger here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, but four things I'm hoping the commission will look into on this, uh, situation. Uh, there's some things that are just really silly and, and not really what we want as a result for the benefit of the community. Uh, the first one is the, the sea light viewing port. Uh, you know, these cost the city nothing, they cost our visitors nothing. They're a link for people to, in their mind, come to Santa Cruz and see some nature and have a nice time and, you know, experience some of what Santa Cruz has to offer. Uh, just covering them over would just be silly. I mean, what's the point? Like I said, they don't even cost anything. So, number one, I hope you'll certainly act on that. Uh, a second thing that I think is troubling and misdirected is the walkways down lower, uh, towards the ocean. We know in nineteen seventy-nine, I believe, the Capitola Wharf, two buildings on the end, were completely destroyed by waves. We know now that with global warming, we're having higher seas and bigger storms, that walkway down there is subject to these weather events. If it comes loose, you have these huge pieces of, uh, wood smashing into the pier, to the pilings of the pier. Uh, that, if no one's there to, to get killed, uh, it'd just be pier damage. But that's certainly something that, that is not wise planning to, uh, create a situation where the pier could suffer severe damage. Uh, another issue I hope you'll look into is the, um, non-cruise ship landings. We keep being assured that these giant, uh, landings are not for cruise ships, but, well, what are they for? Uh, you know, they say they're for what, marine, uh, research vessels? Well, which, what marine research vessel, the Nembary has their own place, uh, Monterey Aquarium has their own place. I don't think it's in the interest of Santa Cruz to have thousands of people, literally, or the environment of Santa Cruz, charging down the wharf. Uh, certain business committee members might like that. I don't think that would, uh, create an attractive wharf for any other, uh, potential visitors and customers. So, let's get rid of these, these, uh, landings that aren't for cruise ships, but don't seem to be for anything else. We're getting assurances from the staff that they're not. But we also were told by the manager of the wharf at the original EIR hearing that cruise ships couldn't enter the marine sanctuary, which we found out is clearly untrue. They do and can come to Monterey. They have dumped raw sewage just a couple hundred yards off of the harbor in Monterey, and they, uh, pollute the air drastically with unregulated diesel emissions. So, let's make sure they can't come if they're being, we're being told they're not going to. Well, if they're not going to, why do we have to have planning that allows them to later? That's double talk, and as is the grandeur of the buildings that are oversized and not in harmony with the, uh, environment and the ambiance of the wharf. If we're not going to build big buildings, let's say, we can't build big buildings. I don't think people come to Santa Cruz to admire the grandeur of overly large structures. That's not what Santa Cruz is about. So, let's put it in writing, a reasonable limit that's in harmony with what we have on the wharf already, and so that it, that, uh, change and ignore it later on down the road. So I hope you look at these four points and, uh, make sure that we're not going to get led down the path that's going to have some militarious effects on the wharf and on the businesses and on tourism and on the residents of Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have their hand up?
Not at this time. This would be the, oh, there's one. Could everyone who's waiting to speak to the commission, please, press star nine now?
I get the, it's at a regular public meeting that people wait until, uh.
For the dramatic finish, right. Ah, we have two now. Um, the next speaker, uh, actually has his name, uh, Charles Meyer.
Okay, um, you have up to three minutes.
Oh, thank you. It's probably pretty brief, but it's, uh, my name's Charles Meyer. I'm a, a tenant on the wharf, and I just wanted to say that I support the, the, um, project and, um, I think it would be positive for the community overall and, um, as well as, uh, having some flexibility to design a, a great destination at the end of the wharf would be excellent. And, um, it is a place where people come and have been coming for generations and generations and to create, uh, a little more growth and a little bit more, um, newness and freshness there would be wonderful. I applaud that, but I think you should support it. Thank you.
Okay, there is another speaker on the line. Uh, last four numbers, zero, six, six, five.
Welcome. Uh, please introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes. And you need to unmute. Star six, unmute?
Yes, there you go.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're ready to.
Well, thank you. Uh, this is Carmela Waintroub, and, um, I have, uh, been interested in this pr- uh, project for a long time. And I have to be honest about it, it's been a hard ti- uh, hard thing to wade through all the material that, uh, and, and ups and downs and ins and outs of this for such a long period of time. And I lost, kind of lost track of it at some point. But recently, I talked to Dave McCormick and had a really nice conversation about the project, and basically I support it, and I'm happy that it's happening, and I also have some issues. So, um, I'm going to refer to the, um, the document, the only document that I could actually find, because Dave said that the original one was five hundred pages. So I got, I only got to the final copy of the EIR, um, plan, which I think is two hundred pages, and I have to say I read every single page. And then I was really confused. It's a lot of material. So here I am, asking now for a more specific consideration on the, uh, aesthetics part of this plan regarding the destination landmark building that will, as far as I'm concerned, be too far, high, and will cover much too much of the wharf square footage. Um, I feel kind of like the wharf itself is a destination, and, um, there, there are many people that feel like this building is out of scale for the rest of the wharf buildings, and that it will dominate the landscape of the ocean, but it will also dominate the landscape of the actual wharf itself. Um, many of the letters from citizens reflected the lack of support for this building, um, because it's too large and too dominant. Why put this into the plan if it seems like the, the coastal commission also has issue with the lack of consistent scale? So the response notes, in their notes, uh, their comments, um, that, um, Mr. McCormick made, um, and they sent their letter to him, that, um, it is being included in the plan for a possible future development that does not guarantee that it will actually not be developed and become an eyesore, taking up valuable open space that people have come to the wharf for. I dare say people generally do not come to the wharf to be enclosed in a large warehouse. They can go to Costco for that. Um, I feel the planning commission should respect the opinion of the residents of Santa Cruz and not put this in if it actually seems to be, um, part of the project that a lot of people aren't happy with. It is, um, I was shocked when I saw the elevations. I couldn't find them anywhere online, so I just saw them tonight. And I have to say, I was visibly shocked to see how, how big it is and how much of the, uh, footprint it covers. So I want to also say something about the infill, um, possibilities of the wharf, that we're not building a city on the wharf. We're, we're trying to keep a low-slung, um, building the way it has been, so that the, um, the natural features of the ocean are the, the, um, focus and not a lot of buildings. Although I do totally support the fact that this, this, um, this wharf is also a shopping area and it's also a restaurant area, so I love the fact that it has commercial purpose. I, and I think that that destination building should be turned into more commercial space, if that's our goal, with lower, um, height and more variety and not such a huge dominant, uh, landscape object. I, I, I'm just feeling very strong. So again, I do support the improvements that need to be made to the wharf, and I look forward to future opportunities for public input. I know these are required, but they need to be listened to, responded to, and generally taken into consideration, partly because I've seen too many instances in Santa Cruz where the city council takes the plan and just runs with it, no matter what the citizens have to say about it. And I know aesthetics are subjective, but I also know a lot of people don't like the size and scope of that one building. So, thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you to all of you for being so patient tonight to go through this in such great detail. I do definitely appreciate your work. I also appreciate all the work that went into the, to this plan. The ERI, EIR plan itself was, is a very good document, so thank you. I'm going to shut up.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission?
I don't see any raised hands. If there's anyone of you six that wish to address the commission, now is the time to press star nine. And I've got nothing.
Okay, um, based on that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for, uh, comments first and then action. Uh, what, Commissioner Nielsen?
I actually, before I have comments, I actually have a couple of question, a couple more questions, um, just based on some public testimony. Um, the, this is for, um, this is for David. Um, so, for the other, for, for the existing commercial buildings that are on the wharf, what is the, what's the maximum, um, height that's allowed currently?
I think it's under the existing zoning of forty feet, um, but Lee could probably confirm that.
Yes, I believe that's accurate. And then, uh, so the existing zoning allows forty feet, and then-
and then, you know, there are, there's an ability to go higher through separate processes, either through a PD or I believe that the zoning also allows like certain architectural projections above that. You know, minor, minor things.
So, or if, if, if one of the existing commercial buildings were to be built, does it, does that need to go through a public process? Or is that, is that already just covered within the zoning and they can build it up to the 40-foot height?
So, two things I would say to that. They could go up to the 40-foot height, and they could go through an administrative review process that would not trigger a public hearing. However, our, a new building of, of any substantial size would likely trigger a community meeting under our roughly two-year-old now council policy on community outreach. And so, there may be a community meeting and there may not be a public hearing. I will say this was a point of discussion last night as part of the Historic Preservation Commission's deliberations with respect to what items are referred to them and go through a historic alteration permit. And there are different perspectives surrounding that in relation to whether the Wharf itself is a historic site or whether it's just a structure. And there was, you know, probably 45 minutes of discussion about that last night. So, I don't know that we need to rehash all of that. But suffice to say that, you know, there could be a historic alteration permit. There would likely be at least a community meeting. And if they wanted to go higher through plan development, for example, then that would certainly trigger a public hearing. So, long answer to a short question.
Okay, but higher, when you, when you say higher, you mean higher than the 40 foot?
Higher than the 40 feet. You can use a plan development permit to go higher than 40 feet, and that would trigger a public hearing. That would also have its own SEQA analysis associated with it, and we would be evaluating that for heights. You know, this is again, absent the, the current master plan. We'd be evaluating that for aesthetic impacts and so forth associated with height.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would reiterate with that, that again, part of the impetus between the Coastal Commission and our internal process is for updating the master plan because what the old master plan, in effect now, is calling for may not be what the community really wants.
Okay. But it, but this, but this master plan is not calling for those, for those building heights to be, to be lower. Like the existing for, well, I guess that's the, is, are, is, I don't, I don't recall seeing in the master plan that there, that there was any discussion around the, the, the commercial buildings, aside from the three new buildings that are being proposed, would be brought down to a lower height.
It calls for a 35-foot maximum on the other ones.
Oh, it does? Okay.
Yeah, maybe I missed.
Okay, I guess I missed that. Okay, so, so basically, based on this, okay, so based on this master plan, then 35-foot would be the maximum for the commercial buildings? And staff currently right now is supporting a 40-foot high limit for the three other buildings, correct? Okay. Okay, so I have one additional question regarding the...
If I could comment, sorry, and just to, sorry. I want to do, give you a complete response on that because I also want to verify here. I believe that this, and Dave, you may know off the top of your head. I'm sorry, I was trying to scroll here onto our GIS. Is this part of the Coastal Commission's original permit jurisdiction? For coastal, through Coastal Commission?
Yeah, I think because it's on top of the water, they have ultimate jurisdiction.
Right. So, the, the other answer to that question, sorry, I was, I was referring to our permit, but the Coastal Commission would do a permit as well for that, for the, for the coastal development permit. Sorry, I left that out originally.
Yeah, okay, that, so that would happen regardless, right, for, for any new structure on the Wharf?
Yeah, and I, I'm going to verify that as I pull up the GIS here. But I, I will leave it there, and if I don't come back and correct myself, that is the response. Let me, let me get to the GIS.
That's been our, our experience in discussions with them.
Okay, great, thank you.
They view that as their territory. Our coastal program does not apply ahead of theirs.
Got it, yeah. That's what I would expect. I wanted to verify and realize I left that.
Okay, understood. Then the, the other question I have goes back to the western walkway question. In terms of the setting the, the lower walkway with the, with the, with the additional set of pilings that are, are there to protect the Wharf, is this a technique that has been used elsewhere that you know of? Like in terms of setting pilings out to protect the Wharf, but also creating a lower walkway in addition to that?
I'm going to, I'm going to punt that to John. I could think anecdotally that I've seen it in some places, not in a, a structure of the scale. But John had a good answer about how, you know, other Wharf masters and stuff view our Wharf.
Yeah, a lot of other Wharfs view our Wharf as, we're the big dog in the state. They look to us for answers. They have a lot of confidence in what we do. But I will say this, that, that guard piles, fender piles, however you want to describe dolphins as well. We have three piles driven together, a rope around them, or some sort of containment at the top. These are all very common structures around, around Wharfs. And so, it's something that's commonly done. To incorporate a walkway, we've certainly seen it in, in waterfronts. It's, it's not there particularly to protect the Wharf. It's just often to bring a, a walkway down closer to the water. But generally, we like to look for the two-fers and three-fers when it comes to doing a structure, and this accomplishes several things.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to follow up on your question to just clarify. If the council supports the HPC recommendation for 35-foot height limit for all the buildings, does that become the standard? Essentially, adopting the Wharf master plan is adopting, as I understand it, the general plan for the Wharf. And so, if the decision is to have a 35-foot height limit, that becomes the, the requirement. Is that not the case? Or is that the case?
I think I'd punch Lee on that, but typically, you know, you'd have to bring the zoning in line with it, and it would have to be incorporated into the master plan or the general plan. But let Lee speak to that.
What I would say to that is, you know, it's, it's a council policy document. And if we're bringing something forward, it needs to be consistent with the council, adopted council policies, unless it's accompanied by a modification to that. So, if the council, you know, ideally, we would have it, we would have our zoning consistent with that. But if there's something in the master plan that's deviating from that and more restrictive, then we would look to have project compliance with that more restrictive standard.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners have comments? Yes, Commissioner Greenberg. They seem to be muted. They're still muted. You can't be heard. Commissioner Greenberg, we can't hear you.
It must be her phone.
Um, we cannot hear you.
I'm so sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So, this is again, a question about the lowered walkway and the degree to which, following up on the public comments, the issue of sea level rise in relation to this and whether this has been studied and perhaps in, in coordination at all with the Resilient Coast Initiative happening along, you know, westward and, and the boardwalk area. That's my first question. And the second question was about, another question from the public around sea life viewing and the reasons for which there couldn't be similar opportunities for people to look down and view sea life within the Wharf in the way that it has been done and whether conceivably that could be built into or maintained within the structure of a, of a building that would go on the end of the Wharf. Those are my two questions. Thanks.
Yeah, John, you look like you are prepared for the sea level rise one?
Yes, that was all, that was all looked at, and we are compliant with the, with the, in our coastal planning. We've done all of the sea li, sea level rise calculations, and our plan is, is well-supported. With regards to the, to the sea lion viewing areas, which were originally developed as fishing accesses in the old fishing park on the end of the Wharf, those have been moved many times over the years, and we've, we've maintained them. And there's no reason to expect that we couldn't maintain them, whether we built the landmark building or not. The landmark building was originally, when it was in the master plan, took, sort of took into account that the dolphin would still be there. The underpinnings of the dolphin are such now that perhaps, or perhaps not, there's, there would be an opportunity to incorporate that business into the building. There's a lot of things that could happen there. But you could certainly maintain the, the viewing ports. If, if, if everybody feels like that's a really important, yeah, you could, you could definitely do that.
Yeah, I, I would just add to those two things. Sea level rise is evaluated in the engineering report, as well as changing weather conditions, I believe, and in the SEQA document under hydrology section. As far as the sea life viewing, if you look at staff's recommendation, I think item six is a commitment to either preserve or relocate to an equal or, or better location, those, those viewing ports. I think the widening of the end of the Wharf, as well as potential changes to how it's laid out with buildings that are there or could potentially be there in the future, gives us a lot of opportunity to find key locations for that. But we're committed to preserving that element. People seem to love it. I know I love, it's fun to go to, so why get rid of what's not broken?
Other comments or questions by commissioners? Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you for the report. I just wanted to kind of go over three general areas that I'm really thinking about. Not surprisingly, the height is one of those. It's, you know, also hearings in the Historic Preservation Commission that 35 feet is their recommendation. Although the zoning does allow up to 40 feet, it says in the report that the average is 27 feet. So, the increase that the staff is supporting is significant. I mean, 40 feet versus 27 feet is pretty significant. So, I'm much more supportive of something, just for all the buildings, a 35-foot limit to be in line with the Historic Preservation Commission. The aesthetic analysis in SEQA, there's been some discussion about the subjectivity of that, but I think there's just basic logic as well that goes along with those analyses. And the footprint shown in the photo simulations certainly, to me, appears significant. And another part of the aesthetics that wasn't analyzed, and I think needs to be part of this discussion, and I hope that my fellow commissioners would also take this under consideration, is I think one of the commentators actually brought it up, that, that the ocean is a part of the experience of the Wharf. And the fact that there's no analysis of what it's going to be like to stand on the Wharf and how that's going to change as the footprint of the buildings change. I'm very supportive of the walkways. I do have some concerns about putting people closer and closer to the sea lions because although they are used to having people around, that could change their behavior, getting people closer down to them. But generally speaking, I think improving access to the Wharf, allowing people to go out makes a lot of sense. But the, the building footprints, I have really, I have real concerns about. And I, I think it's really going to affect that feeling you have when you stand on the Wharf of, I've been on a lot of boats in my life for work, and you really feel like you're kind of on a boat, except the lack of the movement. You're really surrounded by the ocean, you're surrounded by the birds and the sea life. And then the viewing ports also allow people to kind of get a feeling and see the sea stars and the mussels on the wharf. So, I think that that's something that we need to think about maintaining. And the landmark building, I think, really is going to prevent that. And, and using the reasoning of, there used to be a warehouse to store things out on the edge of the Wharf for a reason to rebuild something that large, to me, also doesn't stand up from a SEQA standpoint. So, I have real concerns that the SEQA analysis and the EIR is not going to stand up with the aesthetic findings and that there are significant impacts that need to be considered. I'm much more supportive of 35-foot height. And I really don't think we need the landmark building at all, and that would be a way to move this plan forward. We really do need to move it forward, and we could remove the landmark building as part of this and change the design standards to 35 feet and possibly continue to move this forward. And I'll leave it there for now.
Other commissioners have comments? I've got, Commissioner Spelman, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I do want to, you know, thank the public and their comments for this process. This is a very complicated issue. Anybody that's delved into these documents and really dug in and started to understand them realizes that, you know, there's, there's a ton of work here, a ton of questions and opportunities, all couched in, you know, how do we save this precious resource that we have? So, I think in the big picture, for me, I would find it irresponsible if we can't find a way to approve the, a master plan and the EIR to support it. I think there's been a lot of good discussion to add some fine tuning to the language to, let's say, protect people's interests in, in seeing potentially less development out there. I'm in support of that idea. I do think there are some problematic components to the overall layout of the, let's call it, ultimate build-out. And I think it does relate back to the experience of being on the Wharf and how you engage, you know, with the ocean environment there. We've, you know, it's essentially a one-sided street, right, with open space to the south or to the east and buildings along the northern edge and a pretty substantial row of buildings uninterrupted. Why don't we propose interrupting that experience so that you could actually engage with views of Cowell Beach and West Cliff and, and those elements, getting down to the western promenade, the lowered walkway? I think more opportunities to actually experience being out in that ocean environment are as important, if not more important, than just filling up the commercial space, so to speak. So, I, I think there's room in the plan to allow for that. I think it could be as simple as describing a motivation to increase that aesthetic experience for the Wharf. But I think there should be some language that, that does highlight that. I did, the Historic Preservation Commission's comments sort of resonated with me. It sounds like requiring the historic alteration permits is already in play, so I don't think that's a new item. I think... I think putting concrete words to describe some sort of a wharf museum or historical communication component to the plan would, is, is an important one and I think that's something that we should include. I'd also, on the, on the height issue, so forty-five feet does seem substantial, given the footprint of the, let's call it the destination project at the end of the wharf. I, I can understand the motivations for wanting to, in a, in the large sense, place the biggest structure, you know, at the end and have some differentiation between that and the rest of the buildings on the site. But in this case where we're talking about, you know, the best view, the end of the wharf, the most potential to block, you know, views back and forth and sideways and everything else, it's already the destination. I don't think having the extra bulk and mass is necessarily going to, you know, put the cherry on top, so to speak. I think a much more in scale, it's already the biggest building by itself out there. I think there's plenty that can happen in that and, and not have to be that big of a structure from a height standpoint. I do want to recognize the public comment. We had few speakers tonight, but there were many voices in the comments for the EIR as well as, you know, petitions that have circulated, et cetera. I don't think for myself, I have come to an understanding that the bird habitat, specifically the pigeon guimot, hopefully I'm saying that right, has been vetted or that that answers, that question has been answered by the EIR consultant tonight. So I think that for sure needs to be shored up. If it wasn't specifically addressed, I think that's a problem. And then I want to thank, I think it was Fred Geiger who, you know, made some very astute, simple comments. He even called them silly. But of course, we have to preserve the sea life viewing portals, right? Whether they're where they are now or in another location, we need to include that in the master plan, that it will be preserved in some location moving forward. I also have this, because we're starting to talk about not including cruise ships, I mean, I think it's obvious that we don't want to include cruise ships, but we haven't really specified what it is we do want to encourage or, or to allow, to, to engage with the wharf. So I think we need to do that. I think we need to have a little bit clearer understanding on, on what that is. I don't, I don't have an answer right now, but I do remember twenty sixteen when we talked about this, there was discussion about, you know, I don't know what the right term is, but shuttle sort of vessels that potentially could engage from Monterey Bay Aquarium and, and the wharf. I'm on the fence about that. I don't know that, I don't know that we're trying to create a destination for...
We've lost you, Commissioner Spellman, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, my earbud died on me. Sorry, I think I was, did you hear, I was on the point about which type of seagoing vessels we want to allow to come to the, to the wharf. You know, this is a complicated question, right? What, what, what do we want to encourage? I, it certainly resonates that having a viable, you know, fishing connection, local fishermen bringing, you know, fish to sail on the wharf to the restaurants. I mean, I think that's a no-brainer and that's a very easy accommodation. Where, where does it go beyond that? How far does it go beyond that? I don't have an answer to that, but I think it's one that should have some clarity and some discussion around. Yeah, mutual opportunities, you know, and then I think as others have said so far, there are many, I think, improvements from this master plan that are going to be immensely beneficial to the general public. Getting better circulation, getting surfaces that work for people walking out there, people biking out there, the fishermen to engage and have, you know, places to sit and relax and, and do their thing out there, separate the vehicles out there and make that a more safe environment. Those are, you know, those are amazing opportunities. If, if we, as a community, have the wherewithal to implement all of these things and do some of the innovative things like get rid of trash in, in an ecological way, right? This could be a, you know, an example for, for many other places if, if we're able to do this right. But I think the, you know, the, the level of thought that's gone into this plan is, is pretty remarkable and I think amendable. What else do I have? Yeah, and I'm, I'm in general conformance with the proposed staff changes regarding, you know, toning down that entrance time. Certainly sounds like that was a, a concept and not a design when it was presented and certainly we want to be able to sort of control and, and get the right people putting eyes on what the right solution is for that entrance time. Yeah, so that's, those are my thoughts tonight.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Nielsen again?
So I, first off, I, I do want to thank staff and all the consultants for the very in-depth master plan and support, and all the supporting materials. It's, this is obviously a very complex project that's out over the water, so it makes it even that much more, you know, challenging. And so I really appreciate however, how all the stuff was put together and it was, you know, it, it was, it was in-depth and it was a lot to get through, but I, I did appreciate all the, all the effort and the time that's put into it and, you know, throughout all the years. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that as well as the, as well as public input and public comment. It's always important to hear what, what the public has to say about these things because it is, these are all things that are done for the public. So I'd like to thank the public as well. I am in support of the, of this master plan and, and with that, I'm glad actually that the, that the plan, master plan from nineteen eighty was not implemented. I, I don't think I'd ever seen that image before, but that was, that was quite a, a departure. But, so anyway, I, I, I do like the one that we're, that we're looking at right now. I am, I'm in favor of what Commissioner Spellman brought up in terms of the concept of breaking up that row of commercial buildings. That was, that's an interesting thought. It, it reminds me of discussions that we had when we discussed the downtown plan in terms of how far do we want people to be walking before, you know, they have, of these uninterrupted buildings before there's a place to be able to get through. And I think this idea of getting through to the, to that western walkway is an interesting one. So I, I would, I'd like to see something like that worked in if, if it makes sense. The, in terms of the, the landmark building, I'm not, I, I'm in favor of the landmark building. I don't want to see it removed from this master plan. I'm understanding of, of people's comments around the height of the building. I'm, I'm in favor of the building being at the forty-foot height that staff has been recommending. And the reason why is that I think if, if the rest of the buildings are, are allowed to be at a height of thirty-five feet, I think there does need to be some hierarchy established among certain buildings. Now, I, I, so that, that's all to say, I also hear what, what Commissioner Spellman said about that building kind of standing alone. So if it came down to it and, you know, we, you know, I could be persuaded to go down to thirty-five feet on that building and if it meant that we could still keep the building. I'm not interested in removing that building from this plan. So, to me, in terms of the, the wharf master plan, the, kind of the most important thing to me is, is that the wharf has the ability to get, to, to continue to live on and it can, that it can continue to be used. I think that really is the most important part to me. Like, there is, there, in order to do this, there's some substantial changes that need to happen to the wharf in order for it to be viable for the next hundred years and beyond that. And, and, you know, a lot of those things have to do with, you know, the structure of it. And then it also has to do with the economic viability of the businesses. There's, there's a lot of things that need to change and, from what the wharf is today. And I know that people really love the wharf the way it is, but in order for it to be viable and for it to be able to, to go on, there are changes that need, that need to happen. And, and, you know, and a lot of them are, are in this master plan. And so they, to me, the key benefits of this master plan, in my mind, are one, that it's providing the necessary repairs and upgrades to maintain the wharf. Obviously, that's, that's utmost priority for public, for public safety and just for the, you know, the longevity of the wharf. The, the second thing, creating the defined circulation path for the, for biking and walking and having that being separated from car traffic, that, that, to me, that is one of the biggest moves on this, on this plan that I think makes the most sense. And the, the section that, that David brought up that shows the entire cross-section of the, of the wharf really tells the entire story of what is happening with these changes in, in terms of, you have the car circulation and that's buffered from this biking and walking section where, and then there's also this lower section for, that's even separated from that for fishing. And then on the other side, you have the, the western walkway. And, and everything in it, you know, makes sense or, or, well, I, in my, in my mind, it makes sense, but it also has a purpose. Everything has its purpose for why it was done that way or how, why it's designed that way. And so I'm very, I'm just, I'm, I'm very excited to, to see this and I'm, I'm excited to see this, this move forward. The, the other piece that, that I, that I think is really interesting is that, that there's an increased parking capacity that's happening without actually expanding the wharf for parking. I think that's great. It, it just makes a lot of sense. Also, all the bike parking that's being added, all that is great. And the more we can get people out onto that wharf without being in their car is, is fantastic. The upgraded parking kiosks, I think, I think that's a great, great thing. It's going to, in my mind, it will decrease the congestion around getting in and out. And also, the fact that it's moving more to the wharf, it also provides us the opportunity or, or decreases the opportunity for that traffic to be backing up into that roundabout, which I think is a, which is a great idea because I could see that being, being a problem. Increasing access to recreational activities, I think is a, it's a fantastic piece of this. I mean, you get the fishing, there's potential for fishing, there's kind of in ocean swimming activities, the, the ability to take a boat out to go whale watching, the biking, the running and the walking that, that can all happen on, within this plan, I think are great benefits to, to the public. And then I think embracing the public-oriented activities on the wharf, I think is a, so we're, we're talking, we've been talking a lot about these, these new buildings and, and, you know, there's been discussion around, you know, creating a large box and that's what really cost goes for or whatever. And so that, that to me, the landmark building to me is, is really the placeholder for this opportunity for all kinds of different activities. And some of them can be actually built into the building and I think some of them can be just curated, you know, through, you know, throughout the season or, you know, or whatever. It just, I mean, I think it just provides this opportunity for public gathering and I think that's what all three of those new buildings, uh, new structures are really providing is this place for, for the public to be on the wharf but also gather at a, in a particular location and, and, you know, for, for whatever the event might be. And I think it's, I think that's important. I think that's an important piece to this plan. I think the improvement of the commercial storefronts is also extremely important, especially when we're talking about views. I mean, the, the whole idea to be in a restaurant and, and you can't, if you, if there's these blank walls that don't allow the view out, it just, it doesn't make any sense. And the, and then in addition, you know, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be putting the, the functional aspects of, of the buildings on the, on the perimeter. So like, meaning like the, the walk-ins or the storage rooms or, you know, whatever, those should not be placed on that public side of the building. So I, I think that, you know, this plan is, is really showing some, some great ideas, especially, and in addition with the liner uses and getting these smaller businesses out on the, out on the wharf to break up some of the, you know, potential larger pieces so you make it a little bit more affordable for these businesses to come in, open up and, you know, make, and have a go at it and, you know, maybe it's something that they would expand for, you know, take that, take that concept and go to a larger building or, or into a larger space in the future. I think it's, I think it's a great, a great idea. So anyway, with all of this, I just, I think that the, that these are the key elements that, that are, within this plan are the key elements that are going to provide the bright future for the wharf as the, as a benefit, as a public benefit with the social, environmental and economic strategies that, that will, you know, for those that will work, play and gather on the wharf. So, so I'm excited. Thank you.
I have a member of comments. I want to start with a question. It kind of follows up on something Commissioner Spellman said. I wonder if the environmental consultant could respond to the testimonial, testimony we had regarding the nesting that was sort of critical of the analysis of the, in the EIR. I wonder if we could get a response to that?
I'm sure. Um, you touched it both in the, this is with regards to the west side walkway?
I think there was a, in regards to the nesting in the biotic, the biotic study that indicated that there would, that, you know, the walkways wouldn't prevent, wouldn't prevent nesting and the argument that it, they actually would and that there was no evidence that, that the walkways wouldn't prevent it. So I, I just, I wasn't clear on the question, but...
Okay. So just to preface this... Um, so just to, to preface this, um, sometimes, um, technical biological reports are prepared and appended to an EIR and sometimes the biologist prepare the EIR section directly and that's what we did in this case. So the person, first of all, we had, um, Gary Kittleson and Brian Maury, local biologist who did the nesting survey at the Wharf. And then Dave Compton, who is a biologist with, um, over twenty years' experience at DDEC, um, wrote all of the impact sections, uh, studying and the impact sections related to the bird nesting. And then we had another biologist from DDEC, Michael Henry, who prepared the marine biology, um, studying impact. And there were a couple others on, um, with special issues. But with regards to the nesting, we did report, Dave, um, often reported that the lowered walkway indeed could affect nesting in that area. However, the thing to remember is that this is a Wharf, it's a structure, they're also nesting in other areas in the region, um, in greater numbers than at Wharf. And the expansion, the expansion of these promenades is creating the same under the Wharf conditions as currently exist and there's no reason to, um, think that birds wouldn't be able to use those areas. So based on, Dave is a, um, ornithologist, that's his area of expertise, and he also reviewed this with Gary Kittleson. So they didn't think that that, because the offset with the east promenade was actually creating more habitat in the sense that the Wharf is creating, providing habitat and that it would not have an adverse effect on, um, the ability of the birds to nest there. There would still need to be, you know, pre-construction nesting surveys, there's a full mitigation included on how that would be done and what would be done if the birds are found and where they're found and buffers and that kind of thing. Um, and then I think the other, there was another question that came up in the public comments that is addressed along with this in the final EIR and that had to do with, um, the boat landing. I think there was a comment that the boat landing might, and the activity associated with it might adversely affect the nesting. And, uh, again, Dave looked at that and there's already existing boat landings, there's five of them along the east side of the Wharf. So there's already activity there and more or less the, the small boat landing is consolidating what's already there in one location. And there's still plenty of open area along the Wharf where there wouldn't be any landing. And, um, the, the, the south landing is new, but again, it's, it's, together they represent a relatively small part of the whole Wharf. So there's, and also there's some existing activity there already. So for those reasons, they concluded that, um, that would not have an adverse effect on the nesting.
Can I just add one more observation from the, the EIR? On section, on page four point two dash nine regarding the nesting species, it notes that pigeon gallimots are cliffside cavity nesters in their native habitat. Uh, I would presume that in a, a cliffside habitat, there's not multiple ways of entry. They're typically approaching from one side. Just an observation.
One would think so.
Does that answer your question?
Was, uh, yeah, I, I did, uh, did, David, did you, were you, were you making a statement or a question? I wasn't quite sure of the impact.
No, it's just, it's just my observation that, you know, currently they've got a very favorable multiple entry point, but in their native habitat and where they normally live, it would seem that they typically approach from one side and that even with a restricted access on potentially the west side, their native behavior would probably work. But it's only my observation, it's not based on any science or...
Well, I, and, but I think it's useful, uh, the, the, uh, response from Mr. Loh that talked about the biologists and their analysis do provide expert testimony and, uh, would be considered, I think, substantial evidence that would, um, document, uh, the findings in the EIR. So I, I, I kind of wanted to just get that on the record so it's clear. And let me say that overall, I'm a very strong supporter of the Wharf Master Plan. Um, maybe not as impatient as staff to see it move forward, but I've been waiting for it to happen for a number of years because I think it is a, a very important improvement, uh, not only in terms of the long-term viability of the Wharf, but also in terms of providing additional opportunities for members of the public to enjoy, uh, the ocean and some of the wildlife that exists there. My concern with the landmark building is twofold. One is I don't really, I think it's unnecessary and I don't, um, I don't, I, 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 I think it attracts from the Wharf rather than adds to it. But, uh, even a bigger concern of mine is that, uh, it sort of follows from the comments that Commissioner Dawson made. I think the EIR's analysis of the impact, the aesthetic impact of the proposed building, even at forty feet, um, which is a fifty percent increase over the average height, would be considered a significant impact. And my concern is that to the extent that the plan is approved with, uh, problems with the adequacy of the EIR, it's subject to, um, a lawsuit that could significantly delay it. I don't, uh, see the need for including the landmark building in the Wharf Master Plan at this time. As staff has said, it's probably not going to happen very quickly anyway. And there are so many other projects that need to be done, the walkways, the other buildings, the, uh, Wharf entrance, that, um, where I don't think there's any need to include it at this point. If after those other projects are implemented and it seems like it would make sense to, you know, really provide some kind of a structure at the end of the Wharf, it's not that difficult to come forward with a project and, uh, in my view, and a, um, an amendment to the plan that will allow that to happen. So I just want to really, uh, emphasize that my biggest concern with, um, the proposed landmark building and why I think it needs to be eliminated from the plan at this time is that it will, um, make the plan itself, uh, and it's, uh, vulnerable through, uh, an inadequacy in the EIR. Saying that, I, uh, support actually all the recommendations of the Star Preservation Commission and would hope that in any motion to recommend approval of the master plan, it would include the recommendations from the Star Preservation, uh, Commission. And, you know, from my perspective, the thirty-five foot height limit was, uh, was sort of a, a critical change. I did want to thank the staff for some of the changes that they, uh, particular changes they made, um, to the master plan. Um, looking at page fifteen of the staff report where it deals with cruise ships and the proposed new language eliminates, um, the, the sort of, lets clear language of is not intended to serve as a terminus and just takes that out and says it will not serve as a terminus. I think Commissioner Spellman, uh, uh, raised some concerns about, well, what would be allowed? The staff report or the staff presentation indicated kinds of research vessels and, um, you know, uh, whale watching and some abilities. But I think the, what I understood the major public concern was it's not going to be ocean, uh, it's not going to be cruise ships. And I think that that was made, uh, that change to on page twenty-three does make that clear, although, um, on page eleven, I think it would, um, be useful to add the same language under section three, paragraph seven where it says construct a landing facility for docking at the eastern bayward end for science education, research, sport fishing and whale watching, but take then add, but it will not serve as a terminus for ocean liner. Cruise ships are any tonnage not to provide, nor to provide mooring for extended periods. So I would suggest adding the, the language that staff recommends to that, um, section of, uh, policies so that there would be internal consistency. Um, then in terms of the entrance sign, I think, um, the language that the staff came up with that takes out the specifics is really, uh, good. I think it really does solve the problem and the language that fit about having an attractive entrance sign centrally located atop the parking gate, designed to be visible, the distance while keeping with the character of the Wharf, um, as developed is a really, uh, desirable change. I would recommend though that the, that the drawing in the master plan, uh, that shows a, a possible, uh, gate, uh, which I think is on page, um, page thirty-six, uh, it shows an eighty-foot sign. I think that should be deleted from the plan. Um, the EIR, uh, analysis, um, would set the limits of what could be, um, could be approved. It doesn't need to be in the plan. I think it just is going to be confusing to the public, misleading, uh, and to the extent that people don't trust, um, what the council is likely to do, having it there in all its glory, um, is going to make people unhappy. So I think it's, um, it would be really desirable to, and I would, uh, hope that when, when we take action on this, we include a recommendation to just delete that, uh, page with that, um, that drawing because I think it's, one, unnecessary, two, misleading and in a way inconsistent with the proposed language that staff has added, which I think is, uh, you know, very desirable language. Beyond that, the only, uh, recommendations I was going to make would, uh, would be to support the thirty-five foot height limit, uh, for all the buildings. I think the Wharf has a, you know, I, I walk on the beach, uh, the main beach in the Seabright Beach a lot and there's a sort of character to the Wharf that you, that you, um, when you're walking in terms of just gives a certain impression of, um, the, you know, what's going on there. And I, I think it gives the Wharf a character that really is in keeping with the kind of community that we have. And limiting the height of the new buildings to thirty-five feet and eliminating the landmark building, um, would be, um, you know, really be worthwhile changes to make in the, uh, recommendations to the council on the master plan. So those are my, um, um, oh, yes, Commissioner Conway, did you have comments?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Um, first of all, I, um, thank, thank you all for your comments. I really, um, as always, appreciated all of them. Um, and I especially want to thank David for really, um, making it, um, very clear, very complicated report. And I also want to thank, um, Mr. Bam, Bam Bachi, um, for maintaining the Wharf for us, um, all these years under trying circumstances. Um, one thing that's really clear through this process is that Santa Cruz really loves this Wharf. And, um, uh, if we want to have a Wharf, which it obviously do, um, we need to have a plan. And, uh, this is, this is long overdue. Um, I know the city's been getting, uh, pressure for a long time from, um, agencies, especially Coastal, the Coastal Commission, um, urging adoption of a plan. Um, and, uh, we need to have approved environmental documents and a master plan, um, in order to get the kind of funding that we need to be able to, um, support this plan. So there's a lot to love in this plan. Um, the year-round use, um, it, it gives us a chance for it really to be economically vibrant and what I would say is even economically viable. Um, I think that the balance between, um, public open space and commercial space to allow us to keep this Wharf is, is really important. It's a resilient plan. Um, I really appreciate the sensitivity to the historic use and also just how treasured this Wharf is by our community, um, historically. And as has been said by a number of people, um, the circulation and the safety, biking out there, walking out there, um, visiting the sea lions, boating, you know, around it, swimming around it, um, it's just, it's a really important place. Um, I, uh, like Commissioner Nielsen, I am in favor of the landmark building. Um, I don't know that it'll get built, but I think that it, it's aspirational. I think that the potential uses out there, um, could really be amazing. Um, and I also, I thought forty-five feet, I understand the difference and I understand the, um, I liked the, you know, the sort of deco references with some appurtenances. I thought they seemed kind of high also. Um, I'm not in favor, um, of reducing it to thirty-five feet at that, this time. I haven't heard a compelling reason to, um, set a limit that's less than the current zoning. Um, however, um, whatever building does come forward is going to receive and also certainly deserve intense public scrutiny. Um, does it fit in? Does it add to, um, both the use and the appearance of the Wharf? And I think, um, that those things are important. Um, and, uh, I also, maybe more than anything, the ability to, um, adequately maintain this treasured resource is really the compelling overarching reason, um, to support it. Chair Shifrin, uh, suggested that we should, uh, uh, or ask if, if, um, if there was someone going to make a motion, which I'm certainly willing to make, um, if we would consider including the recommendations of the HPC. Um, I'd like to ask that they be, um, put up for, um, better review. We haven't had a lot of time with those. There was one of those that I think would be a real mistake to include. Only one stuck out with me. Um, and I believe that there was something about a building any bigger than, was it three thousand square feet, um, should add, uh, additional layers of bureaucracy. And that just seems way too small to be practical, um, if I got that right. Um, and I feel, um, if, if I did get that one right, my objection to it, um, is that it is going to make it harder, more expensive and far more time-consuming, um, to, um, some of the vibrant businesses we're trying to open out there. Um, and again, I love so many of the ideas about use of the commercial space, especially the ones that, you know, it's built out, it can come in, it can come out. Um, thank you for putting that back up.
Did you get the right one on your end?
Uh, I, I don't see it.
Okay. Um, and yeah, and, and they're kind of finalizing the, the minutes, so this is basically, uh, paraphrasing, but getting the key elements of what they said.
Well, in anything that we do tonight, we're going to be sending to council. So if some of the language is, is finalized, okay, um, uh, I'm all right with letter A. I, um, really strongly disagree with, um, letter B. Um, I love, um, letter C to encourage the development of a Wharf history museum and, and other interpretive materials. Um, and, um, and I guess I didn't notice that this is part of that, of that. Um, I am not in favor of reducing the landmark building, um, below the current zoning. Um, however, I'm also not, um, if, you know, to thirty-five feet, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's helpful. I think it, um, hamstrings a future project that I think is fairly likely to not go over thirty-five feet, but I'm not in favor of it. So I, I think everybody has spoken, um, at this point...
I suggest that we're moving forward on this and that somebody make a motion to approve the staff...
I was actually, I was just about, I was in the middle of doing that, Chair Shifrin.
Think that this is expressive and then what we could do is people could make, uh, motions to amend and we could vote on the motions.
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to, I was actually just trying to do that, uh, Chair Shifrin. Um, I was going to move the, uh, staff recommendation and include, uh, two of the recommendations... I was going to move the staff recommendation and include two of the recommendations from the historic, the preservation commission, sorry, I got into county language for a minute. And I don't see him again, I believe it was, uh, letter, thanks for putting it back up, including the first and third, letter A and letter C from the HPC recommendations. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
In that motion.
Okay, you wanna take that down so we can sort of see each other? Uh, is there anyone who would make a mo, yes, Commissioner Dawson?
Is this time to make an amendment to that motion?
I need a second.
We got a second.
A second now.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been motion and seconded to approve the F recommendation with recommendations A and C from the Star Preservation Commission. Commissioner Dawson, did you wanna make an amended, suggest an amended motion?
Yeah, I would like to amend that motion to remove the two sections that, on page eleven and page twelve, that talk about constructing a new landmark building. I'd like to remove both of those sections and also add the HPC recommendation, letter D, for thirty-five foot limit to all building heights.
Could we separate those, those two issues? Have a motion on, actually to delete the landmark building from the master plan? Is that your, the intention of the motion?
Sure.
Um, is there somebody who would second that motion?
Can that?
Commissioner Maxwell? Again, I think that not having it in the master plan at this time will make it a stronger plan legally and given the public opposition to that, to that building. And so, I'm also in support, I'm in support of the motion. Commissioner Spellman, did you wanna speak to the motion, the motion to amend?
Yes, please. No, I'm not in support of eliminating it from the plan. Again, I think this is a, it's an opportunity. Yes, it's a big footprint on the current plan, but all we're doing is allowing for a potential project there in the future. What it is and what the use of it is and the scale of it, I think it would be a big mistake to just wipe it out of the plan. I won't be in support of that point. And likewise, we'll stay on that point, yeah.
I didn't hear the last thing you said, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna comment on the height, but we'll wait for that to come up again.
Okay. Commissioner Greenberg? You're still muted.
I'll get the hang of this. I would agree with Commissioner Spellman on this. I think that there could, that we're creating the opportunity, I think is a good way of thinking about it. And I really hear the concern about the experience of the wharf being one that you're out on the ocean like on a boat. I think there are ways of designing this building, both the sighting of it and the building itself, that could maintain potentially some of that feeling. I'm thinking of like the bow of a ship, you know, that you could come around and there could be seating areas, you know, in front of that building. The building itself could have more kind of sight lines. You know, I'm not an architect, but I could imagine that there are ways of having it be more permeable. I also like the idea that while the other spaces are mainly, you know, purely commercial, it could be more of a public space potentially with more opportunity for gathering. I like the idea potentially of there being a fish market there, a sustainable, you know, fish market, that's not in anything I was reading, but I know that fish markets have been eliminated from a lot of cities around the world and are very popular and we are a, you know, have a fishing industry there. So, I think that in addition to which, there could be other public uses of that space and it could be covered, so it could be, you know, year-round. So, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for that building and that if we can preserve that potential while maintaining some of these concerns about the aesthetics of it, the experience of it, that we could, you know, balance, balance these competing concerns. I support the, you know, preservation of that in the plan. Thank you.
Are there other Commissioner comments? So, this is a motion to amend the plan by deleting the landmark building at this time. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Conway?
No.
Spellman?
No.
Dawson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
No.
Greenberg?
No.
Maxwell?
Um, you are muted, Commissioner Maxwell.
Yes.
Shifrin?
Yes. The motion fails four to three. Did you wanna make your other motion to amend to limit the height of buildings to thirty-five? Commissioner Dawson?
Sure.
So, are you making a motion? Why don't you say?
I am. I'm making a motion to include the HPC recommendation, letter D, to have the motion aligned with that recommendation for thirty-five foot height limits for all the buildings.
Is there a second? There a second to the motion? I thought I saw a hand up. Well, I'm gonna second it for discussion. I think it's, again, important to keep the scale of the, of the buildings on the wharf so that they are consistent and there's, you know, the character of the wharf is maintained. Increasing the building height by fifty percent is not gonna, is not in my mind gonna do that. It creates a significant impact on the sequoia for the plan and I think it will make a major change here. Does anybody else wanna speak to this motion? Commissioner Nielsen?
Uh, my, um, sorry, am I, okay. Um, I disagree with that. I don't, I haven't heard anything tonight in any testimony from Stephanie Srelo about the fact that the height going, you know, from the average height of twenty-seven feet up to forty feet is a significant impact. The significant impact is based off of scenic, the scenic view and I don't see that this, you know, the, you know, restricting this height down to thirty-five feet is gonna make, is gonna make a change. And the, the other thing is, is I feel strongly about the fact that certain buildings need to have a hierarchy on that wharf. And these particular proposed buildings would fall into that category, in my opinion. And, and so I think just setting a blanket height for all buildings on the wharf, I think is a, is a bad strategy, especially, you know, as, as such a development happens along that wharf and those, and those commercial buildings get up to that thirty-five foot height, I think, you know, I think it's gonna be a missed opportunity by just setting all building height to thirty-five feet.
Doing, Commissioner Spellman?
Yeah, I would, I would sort of echo those comments as well. I think keeping it to the current zoning standard and reducing it from forty-five to forty, as staff has recommended, is appropriate here. I think the reality of building on that wharf is going to be a huge challenge to putting large buildings on it. So, I don't see all of a sudden the proposed commercial area in this master plan being built out to forty feet. So, again, I think it's a parameter, it's a, it's a guideline per se that's in play and I think having some flexibility, which I believe probably will never be reached, is, is, needs to be in there at this point. And, you know, everything will be going through a very scrutinized process, including, you know, coastal development permit, et cetera. So, there's not gonna be, you know, a rush to develop out here.
Well, I agree that there won't be a rush, but as we see with the down, development in the downtown, if the plan allows it, that's what's recommended. So, is there any other comments from commissioners? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Conway?
Could you state exactly how this motion reads? I believe it says it's to reduce from forty to thirty-five.
It's to add the HPC recommendation to have a thirty-five foot height limit.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear. And I'll say no.
Spellman?
No.
Dawson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
No.
Greenberg?
No.
Maxwell?
No.
Shifrin?
I, the motion fails five to two.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I would ask, I suggested a change in the policy, under section three, the policies to make it clear that, to provide the same language that's in the, that staff has recommended later in the, later in the plan in that section as well. Would staff have any objection to doing that?
Uh, you're talking about the cruise ship language moving up in the?
Yeah, I don't think staff would have any objection to that. I would, I would ask one clarifying question based upon Commissioner Spellman's discussion about clarifying what types of boats would go there. And I think later on in the, in the master plan, there's some pretty good clarity about, you know, whale watches, dinner cruises, sunsets, those types of stuff. But we've had some discussion about fishing boats, commercial fishing boats, and that is not currently in the plan. So, if that's something you would want to consider putting in the plan or clarifying, I might suggest you include that in your, your, your motion.
So, why don't we separate those two issues? So, you're saying you don't have a problem putting the language that's later in the plan, earlier in the plan?
Yeah, I think it would be very consistent with our intent not to have, really our commitment not to have cruise ships, you know, overnight ocean liner type vessels at the wharf.
So, would the maker of the motion, the seconder, accept that as a friendly amendment?
I wanted to hear, John, did you have a comment you wanted to make about the fishing boats?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add some clarity about, about the tough landing, just to kind of calm some jitters. Because we're a open ocean, kind of a landing, rather than behind a breakwater, you need to overbuild a landing somewhat to, so it's not a maintenance project all the time. In other words, you build it to accept a larger vessel than what you anticipate, just so that it doesn't put a lot of stress on the wharf, it doesn't put a lot of stress on, on, on the landing. You just, you just build it to a standard that you know you're not going to get to. The boat, the largest boat that we thought of when, when we designed, when we looked at the design concept for that landing was the tall ships that come in, the Lady Washington and, and the.
Museum-like, uh-huh.
Lion feet. Those were two, because they have an ocean science program.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm, it's acceptable to me.
Is it acceptable to the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion would include that change. Now, do you wanna add fishing boats to the, to the list of, in section three, it says, section three on page eleven, actually sec, under section three, it says construct a landing facility for the docking at the eastern bayward end for science, education, research, sports, fishing, and whale watching. Did, David suggested maybe adding commercial fishing? Is that something that the maker of the motion, the second would like to add?
You know, I have a little bit of a concern. I like the idea that a commercial fishing boat could land and, you know, participate in the sort of economy of the wharf in that way, but it also feels like we've got our, our fishing boat infrastructure, if you will, at the harbor and I feel like it's kind of a big thing to, to throw in. I guess I'd like to say, does the language as it's included here in the general plan, would it preclude a fishing boat if it's not included in the language of the adopted master plan? Is there a finding that could be made? Because it seems to me that some further analysis and rolling, kind of throwing it in, I see advantages to it, but I'm a little concerned about it.
Yeah, Stephanie, it might, it looks like Commissioner Nielsen has a comment.
Well, I just have, I just have a quick question. I mean, is it, do we, do we need to include every possible boat that's gonna land here? Or can we just prohibit a certain type or certain types of boats so that we're not, we're not, you know, stuck with this language that says only these boats can come here? I think we, I think that the, it, from what I'm hearing and what I understand from the public is that there's, there's very specific things that they don't want. So, let's, let's prohibit those things rather than trying to list off every possible thing that's gonna show up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Green?
As Commissioner Conway said, it wouldn't preclude commercial fishing boats, but we wouldn't be, you know, kind of prescribing that they would be coming. And are you concerned, Commissioner Conway, that there could be some issue with the harbor in some fashion?
Well, uh, just that, I just, I just think that it's something that we'd wanna be thoughtful about and maybe it's not a big deal.
Right.
It sounded like staff feels like it's okay to say a fishing boat could tie up, you know, sell some fish and, you know, move on. They're not gonna burst there, obviously. So, maybe it's not a concern. And, yeah, okay.
Okay, it's sounding like this is not a, it isn't necessary to add this additional language and it might be confusing or it might need some more study to make it, to actually specify that it's gonna be there.
Yes.
So, the final request that I would make, and I guess I'm asking staff about taking out that illustration from the plan that shows the entrance as inconsistent with additional language that was, I think, I've supported that staff is now recommending.
I, I think, you know, personally, I think it's good to have some examples of what it could be. I understand the target that it potentially has become. My suggestion would be maybe to take out the dimensions and add more examples so that it's not the dominant image, but it's more a collage of different types of entry signage to start the conversation. But if it, if it needs to go and that's the commission.
Happy with that. So, would that, could that be a recommendation, that illustration in the, in the master, to take out the dimensions and provide other alternatives? Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion and the second?
I, I think it might be, but I have a question. I don't think design just gets, you know, cranked out super quickly. Is it, would having further sort of sketches of design slow the process down? I get, I agree with the point of having examples to know what we're thinking about, but I think, you know, those designers work long and hard, it doesn't just happen quickly.
Well, my sense, that could be a.
That was my question, Steph.
If that was approved, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be there in the, at the time it's approved.
That goes with the.
The designer did provide a couple of different examples. So, you saw sort of the bluish sign in one of the, the renderings. Um, so you saw sort of the bluish sign, um, in one of the, the renderings, uh, for the aesthetics, um, but if we, if you were open to it, we could include a couple of those and then just some inspirational images from other places.
Sure.
Um, that, you know, were more artsy or whatnot.
Mhm. I like that.
That's acceptable to the maker of the...
It's acceptable.
Acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody, uh, do any of the commissioners have any other amendments they would like to make to the motion on the floor?
I, I...
Yes, Commissioner Smolman?
I would like to somehow attempt to describe an amendment that would encourage breaking up amassing of the commercial buildings, so that we, we get away from just the long street of continuous facade. I don't want to limit it per se, but I think I would encourage so that folks looking at this would at least understand that there was some concern and potential there to, um, you know, create a different experience if we were able to break that up. I think my, my motion would be to, or my amendment would be to encourage breaking the long run of commercial buildings to have connections to the, um, west side of the, of the wharf as you, as you would travel down, uh, the commercial section.
So, um, that could be potentially put in under the design standards for building form. Uh, it would be adding a sentence, uh, what it says now is, uh, for inline commercial establishments along the western edge of the wharf, buildings are encouraged to balance individual identity within a practical form that's simple, straightforward, and appropriate to maritime setting. Um, uh, breaking up of the, uh, of the mass of buildings should be encouraged? Does that capture what you want to say?
I think it could be more purposeful. I'm not asking to, you know, have a building and then not a building. I, I think it could be one or two, right? I, I mean, I'm leaving it open-ended specifically, but, um, that's it. I mean, it's a hard one to try and wrap your thought around.
Commissioner Nielsen, did you have suggested language that you could propose?
Well, I, I'm not, well, I'm not sure if I do yet, but I, I think, my, I would want to know from John what his thoughts are on this before we start making those changes, because there could be specific things that we're not considering.
Can I speak to that?
Yes. Yeah, please.
Um, there's, there's kind of a practical consideration in that long row of buildings, and that it serves as a windbreak during inclement weather. Uh, the master plan actually looks at, at kind of putting an awning out over part of the sidewalk. Um, and, and this is just kind of looking at the sustainability of, of the wharf and, and trying to, um, weatherize some of the commerce out there a little bit. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm not completely opposed to the idea of no spaces in those buildings at all, but they do serve a practical purpose, uh, in keeping, in keeping the weather down and giving people a place to walk out there when it's not great. And you, and you, and also please consider that you would have the west walkway and that the master plan does call for, uh, see-through, uh, seeing through the buildings. It, it, it does make a lot of specifics about that, so your, so your view was, is not gonna be this block of buildings the way it is now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm fine removing my amendment. I'm good with, uh, the way we have it.
Are there any other amendments, uh, commissioners would want to make to the motion on the floor? So, um, am I gonna be able to remember them? Um, the clerk has the motion.
Yes.
Okay, does any member of the commission want the motion repeated? Or do, does he feel they understand it? Okay, assuming they do, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Spellman?
Aye.
Dawson?
No.
Nielsen?
Aye.
Greenberg?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Shiffrin?
Aye. The motion passes six to one. Um, thank you all very much. Uh, can we, um, move right along, or the commi- well, since we're all at home, I assume people could take a break when they need to.
Chair?
I want to thank staff very much for, uh, their presentation. Uh, I want to thank the members of the public for testimony, uh, testifying, and, uh, let's move on to item, uh, number three, which is an amendment to Title twenty-four, to amend, uh, uh, chapter twenty-four sixteen, the inclusionary housing requirement, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing that's on our agenda. Um, now, Greenberg, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just waving to the folks who are leaving.
Um, Chair Shiffrin, uh, this is the clerk. We may want to preemptively, uh, entertain a motion to extend the meeting to adjourn at a time certain, because it's twenty to eleven, and you're supposed to adjourn at eleven with, absent that motion.
Uh, let me just ask how long the staff report. This has been before us before. Um, if we could have a, I'm not sure how much, uh, well, are the members of the public who are waiting to speak on this?
There are three members of the public, none of which have, uh, raised their hands at this point, but we haven't asked for public comment.
And maybe to be on the safe side, why not, uh, somebody make a motion to extend, if necessary, the meeting till eleven-thirty?
I'll, I'll make that motion to extend the meeting till eleven-thirty.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Um, is there any need for discussion? Is there any, uh, I don't know if we need a roll call vote or not, so, um, does anybody vote, would anybody vote no? Okay, so I'll say the motion passes. Hopefully, we won't be here that long. Um, and let's ask for a staff report on item number three. One.
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, I'm Jessica DeWitt. I'm with the Housing Division at the city. Um, what you see before you... There we go. Uh, what you see before you is an updated staff recommendation to amend the inclusionary, inclusionary ordinance based on direction from the seventh, September seventeenth Planning Commission meeting. I'll go into more detail on these updates in a minute, but first I want to walk you through the steps taken after the September seventeenth Planning Commission meeting. We compared the latest Housing Authority payment standard rent with the state HCD moderate income rents and confirmed that there is roughly a two hundred to five hundred dollar rent difference between the two rent tables, the rents in the two rent tables. And while the studio one and two-bedroom unit rents are higher for the moderate income rent, the three-bedroom payment standard rent is higher. So, after reaching out for feedback from the Housing Authority and the development community, we met with the Housing Subcommittee to come up with the following update to further encourage renting to tenant-based subsidy holders. Uh, in the definitions section, we wanted to clarify how moderate income rent is calculated. The stem definition is based on the state standard formula. Then, based on how the updates flow through the other amended sections, it seemed clearer to define the payment standard unit rent for that five percent of the inclusionary units that must be offered to tenant-based subsidy holders first. And if no one is available, then the rent will be either the payment standard rent or the moderate income rent, whichever is lower. So, while the tenant-based subsidy holder definition has not changed since we last met, we did add a definition for a payment standard unit for further clarification. Uh, section seven hasn't changed since we last met. And in section nine, uh, nothing has changed except for redefining these units as payment standard units, and to reiterate, these units will be always rented to available subsidy holders first, and then as one becomes vacant, it will go through the exact same process with the Housing Authority. Okay, then in section nine C, this describes the process for determining the payment standard rent for a subsidy holder versus a non-subsidy holder. And again, nothing has changed in this section other than that. And finally, in the, then the rest, the concepts of the rest of section nine haven't changed except for encouraging owners to free up low-income units for low-income households by placing subsidy holders in payment standard units when one becomes available. All right. So, to wrap up, here's the staff recommendation being presented before you tonight. Um, I'd like to open it up to the Subcommittee members to see if they'd like to speak and then respond to any questions. Uh, Commissioner Conway, I know you're the chair of the Subcommittee. I don't know if you'd like to speak first?
Um, well, I'd like to thank staff and also the committee members. Obviously, this has been a really bumpy time to try to develop, um, you know, policy, and, um, I really appreciate the time that, that both staff, um, and commissioners, uh, put into it. Um, you know, this was, this additional five percent is, um, really, um, meant to be a compromise between continuing to, um, de-restrict as many units, um, as we can, and also providing, um, um, a, a little bit of room that may or may not make projects more viable. Um, but I think it was an honest attempt, um, uh, to do that. Appreciate it, everybody's feedback. Um, I, as I've stated before, and I'll state it again, um, the, uh, goal of constructing housing is one of the really important purposes. I don't believe we undertook this with the thoughtfulness that it merits, um, but I really appreciate where we landed in terms of, um, you know, trying, trying to seek a compromise. So, thanks to everybody. That's all I have to say.
Were there members of the Subcommittee wanting to, um, they say anything? Uh, Commissioner, uh, Spellman?
Yeah, I, just quickly, I mean, I, I agree with, uh, what Julie said there. Uh, I do think it was a compromise. I do think, at the end of the day, the language that we have put into this ordinance is the right language and the fair language to encourage, uh, the use of the vouchers and to, you know, protect, I think, moving forward, how that would be used. So, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this recommendation.
Uh, could I ask Jessica to, to give us back the, uh, maybe close the shared screen? I can see why the commissioner, I can only see a few commissioners. Hey, Commissioner Greenberg, did you want to add anything to the other member of the Subcommittee?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, um, you know, voice my appreciation to Subcommittee and the staff for their help with this, um, and to Commissioner Dawson, who brought this to our attention, um, and the deliberation that we had that helped us to kind of recognize that it could be unclear, you know, that it wasn't our intention to create any kind of, uh, you know, incentives, let's say, for, um, the people, you know, for landlords not to find section eight tenants. And so, I think this really strengthens, um, the ordinance in a really important way, given that there wasn't really language in the ordinance previously because of, you know, when it was put into practice, um, at a time when moderate income tenants were not anticipated to be covered by the ordinance in the, in the same way. So, there weren't, there wasn't a specification for rental level. But I think just clarifying the ordinance, um, is really helpful and will really strengthen it and ensure that either section eight, uh, tenants will be, you know, that there won't be as much of an incentive not to rent to section eight tenants. Um, and we'll, and, and also the importance of having predictability, um, in terms of developers, you know, going to lenders and so forth will also be maintained because of the kind of stipulation of the, of the similar, um, level, um, to section eight tenants. So, I appreciated all the deliberations and thoughtfulness that went into this. It's not perfect. Um, inclusionary ordinances never are, and they can only do so much, um, but I do think that we strengthened it in an important way. Uh, and so, I appreciate, you know, everyone's participation in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do other commissioners have questions before I open it up to the public? Seeing none, um, are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item? If so, please give us your name, and you have up to three minutes, but first you have to press star nine so you can get into the queue.
There's one person, but they haven't, um, indicated that they'd like to speak at this time.
This is a public hearing, so anybody who wants to speak, um, this is the time to do it. Okay, we don't, uh, still no one?
Nope.
Close the public hearing and bring it back to the, uh, co- uh, commission. Let me just say how much I appreciate the work of the Subcommittee and, uh, uh, the staff here. I think the, the proposed, uh, amendment really, um, goes about as far as it could to try to, uh, uh, attain the objectives that were set for it. So, um, you know, I was not particularly happy to have it sent back to the committee, and I appreciate the fact that the work was done quickly, um, and got back here, and that the ordinance is, um, the proposed ordinance is better than what... So, other commissioners have, uh, comments? Uh, Commissioner Dawson?
Uh, I just would like to, um, echo those, uh, thanks to everyone. This was a long road, and I just want to thank everybody for working so hard. It really is complicated, and, but I really feel that the work you have, all have done, and also just the, the conversations among us as commissioners throughout this process has really resulted in a very, um, I think, a, a very impactful ordinance that is gonna do what it is intended to do. So, um, I don't know if there's further discussion, but if there isn't, I'd like to make a motion, um, to support the ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So, there's a motion, uh, and a second to approve the staff recommendation and recommend the amended ordinance to the City Council? That, that reflect what the motion was?
Yes.
And is there any further discussion on it? Seeing one, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Conway?
You're muted, you, uh, Commissioner Conway.
Aye.
Spellman?
Aye.
Dawson?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Aye.
Greenberg?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Chair Shiffrin?
Aye. Well, again, thanks, I think, it, meaning the staff. Are there any informa-
Good afternoon, or evening. It's definitely evening now.
Say night.
Yeah, good night, Commissioners. Um, I'll make this quick because it is late. Um, at your upcoming meeting, you've got one item, uh, that is on, um, eleven-five. It is a single-family house on Carbonera that will be coming before you, and I think that came before you before and has since gone through some additional environmental review, and will be back in front of you on eleven-five. That's the only thing we have scheduled so far. And then, um, I, um, we are targeting, um, later in November to have some of the, um, uh, objective standards work come to you. We're, we're pushing to get it there. It may, uh, move to the first meeting on December third, um, but hopefully, we'll have that first check-in with the test fits and the outreach strategy on- and the outreach strategy on, um, eleven nineteen, along with the Housing Matters item on Coral Street. Um, and then, um, finally, um, we had five items this week, um, from planning, um, at the Commission. I'll run through them quickly. Um, the zoning ordinance cleanup and parking, um, items that you recommended at your previous meeting. Uh, the first reading was approved at Council, um, this week. Um, the beekeeping ordinance that you, um, recommended approval of in August, um, that was continued when it went to Council because of the fires. Um, some members of the beekeeping community were not able to make the meeting on August twenty-fifth. We continued it. That was approved. Um, they made a couple of tweaks, um, very briefly. Instead of a, uh, three-foot setback, um, from the property line, they said, from the front property line, they said a ten-foot setback from the right-of-way, not from the property line. So kind of split the baby there, kind of a, a middle ground. So if the pedestrian, if there's no curb gutter and sidewalk, it'd be ten feet from the, sorry, if there's no sidewalk, it'd be ten feet from the curb back, um, just to provide separation there. And they also actually made it a little bit easier for, um, the rear yard by only allowing, or requiring one of four, um, criteria to be met. Um, then, um, the, there was a, a general plan amendment and rezoning consideration for one-on-one Felix that the Council expressed, uh, adopted a resolution expressing non-support for. Um, that, um, if the developer chooses to move forward, having received that, um, that indication of non-support for, uh, from the Council, it would come before you, but we did bring it in front of the Council to get an early read. And, uh, that was the, the Council's, uh, position on that. And finally, um, we got a, um, a, uh, clearance from the Council to apply for a, uh, re- a REAP grant. It's a regional early action program, um, grant. It's a guaranteed grant and that would, um, provide three hundred thousand dollars towards an expansion of the downtown plan area. And so we indicated that we would go back to Council and give them a heads-up on the outreach. You know, we probably won't be starting this for some months. Um, you know, probably in the February timeframe at the earliest going back to Council, but we would want to do outreach and, um, and figure out what those boundaries would be as one of the first steps. And, uh, Council asked that we report back to them before we commence that outreach. So, um, lots of things happening and, uh, you guys know about many of them because they're on your plates as well. And so thank you all for the work. Just wanted to report on, um, some of those actions as they've moved forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to Subcommittee Advisory Body oral reports. Um, I don't have one from the resilience study. Um, we had one, is there anything else from the Housing Subcommittee?
You know, I could just check in and just note that, um, one of the really pressing issues when, uh, the increasing, the inclusionary percentage went forward was, um, real concern on the part of the school district. Um, and they, they do continue to be very concerned. But of course, um, COVID has thrown them, um, you might say, off their game as much as anybody. Um, so I appreciate staff's efforts to continue to, um, act as a liaison with the information that we've been seeking. Um, and we do expect to, we have two additional meetings scheduled, um, at which point we expect our, our work to conclude as this Subcommittee. That's it.
Could I just ask if the Subcommittee is looking at, uh, uh, considering an option that would, uh, provide, uh, separate standards for public agencies that are, uh, constructing housing for their own employees?
We, uh, yeah. Um, and I know that we're, we're not agendized more than an update. Um, but I, I think it's fair to say that as part of our update, we're looking at different funding opportunities that are available to employer-sponsored housing being undertaken by public-serving agencies, um, as part of a broad discussion. So we are certainly looking at funding opportunities and their requirements.
Okay. Um, any items refer to future agendas by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner-
I, I think, uh, well, yeah, I was just thinking based on the conversation that we, that we were having earlier, um, regarding, uh, commissioners communicating with commissioners via emails, letters, or, you know, whatever it might be. I think we, I think that should be something we discuss, um, on a future agenda.
Okay, the, so it would be an item to talk about the Brown Act requirements for, uh, Commission, uh, communications with commissioners and the public, I would say.
Y- yeah, I mean, I, yeah, uh, specifically regarding, I guess, providing of commissioners, um, uh, voicing opinion about, um, items to come before the Commission prior to that item happening.
Well, I would add, that's fine, but I think, uh, from my perspective, it's not just prior to, but even at the meeting. Um, I've been told I can't even, uh, submit something to staff and have it added to public correspondence that commissioners would see as part of the agenda material. So I guess that-
But that would be prior to meeting, right? That would be prior to the, to the meeting. So, I mean, if that's, if there, if there is some intention to, to have that, I, I just think there needs to be some, uh, discussion around that because it's, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, um, that becoming a, um, a, um, a thing, you know? I, I think we need to talk, I think we have to talk about it and understand exactly what the limits are.
Hey, is that okay with the planning director? It makes sense to me.
Sure, if it's, uh, of interest to the Commission, we're happy to talk about that. Um, and, um, bring the city attorney in for that conversation. Um, if the commissioners are interested, I, I can't say that, um, you know, we, we haven't been going down that route, um, for allowing those communications earlier. Um, uh, but we, we did make that exception, given that the item was continued. Um, nevertheless, you know, there, there are some intricacies, as I alluded to before. And so if, if the Commission desires to have a, a in-depth conversation about it, I'm sure we can, uh, spend a decent chunk of time talking through it and, um, would be, would be happy to work with you all on that.
That'd be great. Okay, um-
Is, is that something, I, I'm, I'm hearing from a couple. I see Commissioner Nielsen and Chair Shiffrin are interested. Is that, is that something that others would be interested in? I'm seeing, yes, I'm seeing nodding heads. Okay, great. Um, 'cause, yeah, it, it, it will take a, a little bit of work. Um, and so, um, uh, we will, um, work on getting that on a future agenda. It'll probably be, um, you know, probably like the first meeting in December, but, um, we'll, we'll keep you posted on it.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, okay, if there are no other items to refer, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much. It's only eleven oh one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
You too.
Goodbye.